All right, this is Senator, I will call the speaking order. Sorry. Welcome everyone and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members and want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate and provide input can do so. We ask that anyone wishing to address council, wait to be recognized by the mayor, be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. Those speaking opportunities will be announced and everyone will be asked to provide their names and addresses for the record. With that, please join me with my congratulations.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ruling justice of all.
All right, first up on tonight's agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
And we have a motion by council member Henry and a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Right now, we have the community comment on our agenda. Community comment is an opportunity for residents and other stakeholders to share issues or concerns that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. Individuals should not expect the mayor or council to immediately respond to their comments. The city manager, if appropriate, will follow up directly with the presenter and/or respond to the questions during the community comment at the next meeting. With that, is there anyone who's here tonight to speak to us about anything that's not on the agenda? Come on up.
I have a question before we start that.
I'd like for you to come on up and you need to state your name and your address for the record.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Matt Knoll. I live at 1903 Green Ash Drive. We had written communication from Aaron Smith stating that we would have five minutes this evening and I would just ask that we follow through with her words of five minutes for us to be able to speak.
That's the plan.
Oh, you just said.
This is for community comments, it's three minutes.
I apologize.
Yeah. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay. Up first, under presentations and reports for this evening, we have a Carver County update from Commissioner Fahey. Commissioner Fahey, welcome. A lot of folks tuned in tonight to watch your presentation.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. It's great to see a crowd here to
It is.
hear about the county updates, but first of all, just thank you for inviting me to have the opportunity to come and speak to the city council. One of the biggest projects in county history is happening right in front of us with Highway 212. And we broke ground in May of 2021 and currently it's on track to be completed in August of this year, so we're extremely excited about that. We received 25 million from the state legislature this past summer, and so now the second phase from Cologne to NYA has been fully funded. And we hope to break ground with that project in 2024. We also just received another $2 million grant from the federal government earlier this month to help with additional funding because we're trying to do at the Bongards intersection of 212 a bridge. And we applied for a raised grant of about $10 million. We did not get that grant, but we currently are applying for additional funds to try to get money for a bridge to make that intersection as safe as possible. Also on your handout that I sent out or handed to you prior to the meeting, there's a couple of other different projects that are taking place. And then with our CARES Act and our ARPA funds, we've been putting money out, 5.9 million out to housing, 5.5 million out to broadband, and then additional 3 million out to small businesses within the community. And in regards to the broadband access, what the county is hoping to do, it's called Connect Up Carver, the project. And as we have learned during the pandemic, just how important that fast, reliable access for not only residents but also business to have that social connection, but also to have a fiber connection without, within Carver County. So the goal is, there's different types of fiber. Generally, it's called the middle mile fiber, and that's the local area with the city roads, the county highways, and Carver County currently has over 600 miles of fiber throughout the county. And we're starting to focus now on the, what they call the last mile fiber, and that's the road to the endpoint, basically from the driveway all the way up to your home. And the county has allocated 5.9 million of their ARPA funds. And the overall project with the analysis is there's roughly about 2,200 rural un or underserved sites within the county. I was at the Laketown Township meeting a couple of months ago and I asked people, there were 60 some people at that meeting, and I asked, who does not have reliable internet? And about 15 people rose their hands. And I kind of find that surprising. But that's what's happening in Carver County as you go further out west in Hancock Township, Young America Township. And the overall plan is to support those 2,200 rural sites, basically. The cost is about $7.6 million. So we want to jumpstart it with roughly the 5.5, 5.6 million. Hopefully that will get additional funds. And then we'll have to pick a provider. Currently, the county has a great working relationship with Jaguar/MetroNet, but we will send it out to bid and we'll see who that provider is, or it might be multiple providers. So that's going forward. Also. Pardon, was there a question?
Uh, no. If
Oh, sorry.
Those of you who are joining us by Zoom, please make sure you're muted, that'd be terrific.
Also, I asked the finance department at the county to pull some data about property and average home values. Right now, the average home value in the county is $374,000. The average home value in Carver, the city of Carver in 2022 was $329,000. In one year, that value has gone up to $411,000, so roughly about 25%. Out in North Young America where I live, the value went up from 213,000 all the way up to 268,000, so roughly about 26%. So over the last 18 months, as we all know, the real estate market in Carver County and other Minneapolis-St. Paul metro counties has witnessed some of the largest gains in recent history. Most counties like Carver County used to benchmark its property values, report on the median residential property value, and those increases are exceeding 20-some percent. The 2022 assessed values were determined based on sales that occurred between October 1st of 2020 through September 30th of 2021. So this study indicates higher value homes are increasing in value at a more rapid pace than lowered value homes. One of the last things I just wanted to share with you is the redistricting process. Hopefully you've all heard or you understand what redistricting is. It's the process of redrawing the boundaries of the election districts to ensure the people of each district are equally represented. The state and federal congressional boundaries are now set, excuse me, and the county passes that information on to the city clerks and also the townships. And some cities have been, excuse me, some cities have completed their maps and they're sending that information back to the county.
Probably going to take permanent actions against the city stuff.
Is the movie still running?
Hey, uh, thank you.
So as that information comes into the county, we at the county level have until April 26 to redraw the commissioner districts. The commissioner districts are the last piece of the information that will be redrawn. We will be having a public meeting sometime in April to determine all of that, and so that's coming forward. And then just finally, we're extremely proud to be Carver County residents. We're extremely proud to myself is to be an employee of Carver County. We still rank fairly high in being the healthiest, the most educated. We were 11th in the nation among the healthiest counties last year, and we are first in Minnesota. Our standard and poor's rating still continues to be the highest at a AAA rating, and it just makes us proud to, all of us, to play a part in making our county a great place to live, work, play, have a business, and also just have fun in Carver County. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Fahey?
The housing values, can I get a copy of that or can the council get a copy of that sent to us?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Will do, Glenn.
Thanks, John.
So when you're looking at the federal stimulus spending for the county, you have broadband access, you have the 5.5 million and it says pending. Is the project, are you saying the money's pending? I mean, then below that, it says remaining unallocated funds are 9.9. Is that 5.5 going to come out of that 9.9? Or is that 9.9 in addition to the broadband funding?
The 5.5 is what we have allocated to the project.
Okay, so that 9.9 million is outside of that.
Correct.
Are you, are there any talks of what that might go to since that's such a large surplus? I realize that it's CARES Act funding and things like that.
Right.
Direct tax dollars, but.
Yes, Kristi, we had a meeting last Tuesday and we allocated about another 1.1 million of the 9.9 through the various requests that have come to the county. We had given another 300,000 to the CDA. We gave a little over 500,000 to the Historical Society from their request, and the requests are coming in, and we're trying to
I'm sure.
Have those meet certain parameters.
I know that you were talking about that bridge out by Bongards. Was that, is any of that funding that's surplus right now able to go towards that?
Maybe in the long run it might. If we get to, if we're a million or $2 million short, we're really trying to get federal funds
Okay.
for that project.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
John? Lori? Kind of to what Kristi was asking about, the bridge by Bongards, was that not part of the original design?
It was not. The original design was going to be a J-cut intersection like we have at 284.
Okay, and so this is going to be an overpass, a flyover for 212?
No, it would be a bridge going north or south.
Okay, okay, on that cross street.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Up next on the agenda, we have the employee service recognition. We're doing things a little bit differently this year, where we are recognizing folks who have five years with the city of Carver through a proclamation. And what's significant about these folks who have had five years is they joined the city before we started our two truths and a lie game, so they didn't have to share that and kind of go through that awkwardness. I'm not going to make you do it tonight. But I just want to read the proclamation that we have here tonight. Whereas the city of Carver recognizes its employees for years of service throughout their employment, and whereas the following employees have worked for the city of Carver for five years. Brenda Good, deputy clerk, Joseph Grady, firefighter, Michael Greisinger, firefighter, Sean Cox, firefighter, and Cory Trebatowski, firefighter. Whereas these employees are recognized for their dedication, hard work, and service to the citizens of Carver and the surrounding communities, and whereas they have demonstrated the Carver way through preparation, respect, and compassion, which has positively impacted the city of Carver and our broader community. And whereas the city of Carver expresses gratitude for the work they have done as part of the team that works together for a better Carver, now therefore, be it resolved that I, Courtney Johnson, mayor of the city of Carver, do hereby congratulate and thank these employees for their five years of service. So Brenda is the one who's in the room, thank you for your service. All right, let's see here, moving on to the consent agenda. I did want to pull the last minutes, the meeting minutes from March 7th off of the consent agenda for a quick edit. Why don't we approve the rest of the consent agenda? Yeah, I said that in minutes. I'm not sure where you're going.
That's fine.
So let's, uh, let's approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and we'll revisit 7.1.
We've got a motion by council member Sayer.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Mac. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, the only thing that I noticed on the minutes from the last council meeting is the bottom of page two, the motion for appointing Daniel Velik to the planning commission didn't have a second. I checked the video, I made that second, so I was just wondering if that could be added, please. So with that change, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 7th, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll second.
Going to get that to Glenn.
Fair enough.
By Mayor Johnson and a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to business items, item 8.1, the Brookview Housing Development. Ms. Fenton?
Let's see if this shakes out correctly. What do you think about that?
Sorry, thanks for your patience, everybody.
Okay.
For those of you on the Zoom who we may have lost, we're just working through some technical issues here in the council chambers.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for trying.
Aaron, your computer is unhappy.
I know.
I think cooperating with our work session.
Yeah, all right, let's rock and roll. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for your patience. We are working through some new systems with Zoom and Grandicus and being back in person. So sorry about the little bit of a delay, but let's get started. So tonight we are reviewing preliminary plat and rezoning for a project called Brookview. So let's talk through game plan so we all have the same expectations. So I'm going to give a presentation. Staff is available, Aaron with our engineering team, Dave, city attorney, Brent, city manager, and we're going to review again preliminary plat and rezoning. At that point, I will introduce Kurt, the developer for the project. He can give a project overview if I miss anything or wants to share other information. After that, council discussion, community comment. Like Courtney mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, members of the public are welcome to join and provide feedback. Then we'll discuss again rezoning and preliminary plat review. So to kick things off, let's talk about location, just so we all know what project we're talking about. So the Brookview property is circled in red on the screen right now, so it's just south of the Meadows project. Something that's interesting about the site is that it didn't have direct access until the Meadows property developed. So if you're wondering how we got to the site before, it was a strange little cart path, which we're working through a preliminary plat, but again, no major access outside of Mulberry Drive, which is part of Meadows at Spring Creek Neighborhood. So access to Spring Creek Drive to Mulberry down to the Brookview site. So let's talk specifics about the reviews tonight, talking with, starting with rezoning. So first order of business is to review the rezoning request, which is agriculture to R2 PRD. I'm going to talk through all of that because that's planning mumbo jumbo usually, so I just want to make sure everyone has clear understanding of what we're doing tonight. So you might be wondering, why is this project zoned agriculture? If there hasn't been a project or a property has been annexed without a project, that's the default zoning always. So it's not unique for a project to come in as ag, it's pretty normal, and then we move forward with a project and a rezoning. So rezoning is really typical with any development that we see. So we'll talk through the R2 and the PRD. So R2 is largely single family, it's a little bit higher density. We start at R1, which is our lowest density, largest lot, work up to R3, which is our apartment product. So Carver Ridge is an R3 product, this is R2, so right between the two. Typically, projects come through with this request. R2 PRD is really common in Carver. I have a slide a little bit later that shows other projects that have made the same request. So what is a PRD, what does that part mean? So PRD stands for Planned Residential Development, PRD. And what that means is that there can be deviations from the strict zoning code of that R2 district. I will say, most projects that come into Carver require a PRD. For XYZ, this one specifically caters to deviations to lot size, square footage, and then offers a lot of bluff protection, which we'll talk through as well. So deviations, this number has changed since the last time you reviewed the project. The minimum lot size for R2 is 7,000 square feet, so the lot needs to be 7,000 square feet. This request is 6,400 square feet. When we saw it at concept in the first version that the planning commission saw was at 5,500 square feet, so about 900 square feet have been added to the minimum lot size, bringing it up to 6,400. I will note that there are only four lots that require that reduction, so the rest can meet the 7,000 square feet minimum of the R2 district. So of the 20 lots, 18 hit 7,000 or above, four do not. So four lots are requesting that deviation. One deviation that they all are requesting is the side yard setback reduction from seven and a half to five. Again, pretty common in Carver, pretty common in a couple of projects that we've done recently. I have another slide on that in a minute. So you might be asking yourself, where are those four lots that require that deviation? So they're outlined in red. So you'll see that they all access off Mulberry Lane, so none off Brookview Court, which is the east-west cul-de-sac where Mulberry continues south. So the four lots that are under the 7,000 square feet, so between 6,400 and 7,000 are those four lots that are circled right now. Something else to note, if you're looking at the plans pretty closely, is that there are different, there should be a more technical term, boxes on each lot, and they show different things. So the building pad is first, then the setback line, and then the dash line is always the easement line. Easements are typical, they're on every single property in the city of Carver. We typically hold five feet front and back, 10 for the two sides, and that allows the city to have access to every property should we need it. Sometimes there's utilities in those areas, so we need access if we need to fix any type of pipe. So those, the easement line is always dashed, so something to think about when you're looking at the site plan. So if you want to zoom in, you can see the different lines, but again, dashed is always easement. So that was a review of the rezoning, I have some more information later, but let's talk preliminary plat. So I was thinking today, going to have a great audience, how can I communicate this well, that someone might like, I thought about that and I understood that. And then what I'm going to think about it tonight is that the preliminary plat shows things that are on the ground. So what that means, it shows where a lot would be, where a house would be, number of lots, the location, things that it doesn't show, utilities. So you're not going to see a storm pipe on a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat is the guiding document that shows number of lots, location, it has drainage and utility easements, so we can believe there might be something under the ground there, but again, doesn't have that level of detail. Has street locations. Something else I want to note about this process right now, we're at preliminary, we are pretty far from the final version of the plan, so typical planning process, preliminary plat is our heavy lift, just because between concept and preliminary, we want to make sure that the project works before we bring it to you. And then we go back for final plat, which is required for this project for final approval, and we really refine it. So it's probably a developer's worst nightmare when they submit their first set of plans. At that point, the city is, puts together a comment letter, so we essentially go through the plans and tell them everything we don't like, or everything that doesn't work, things that don't meet our standards. If a project is great, it's usually about three pages. If a project is in rough shape, it can be 10 to 12 pages of just city review of things against our standards that we know do not work. So we take what we know here, what we require, what we've adopted, we apply them to those plans for preliminary plat, understanding that we have another process to get through, final plat where we tie up some of those loose ends. So on the screen now is that technical planning document, the preliminary plat. So if you're, if this is the first time you're seeing it, I don't expect you to know what all those lines mean and what it all means when it shakes out for a project, but generally, again, it shows lot layout, lot location, number of lots, street layout. This is the only document tonight that we're asking you to approve outside of rezoning. So plans are not attached to a preliminary plat, it's just this one document. So thinking through some project details, let's start talking about some of the nitty gritty. So Brookview tonight is slated for 22 single-family lots. We had our planning commission meeting in February, I'll talk through some of the changes that happened after that meeting and after you saw it from concept plans, so there's been some pretty significant changes. So again, tonight, preliminary plat approval does not equal plan approval. So in the packet, you got a full plan set showing what we know about the construction, how we think it will be constructed, but tonight, we're not contemplating those plans. That's not the city council's role at this point. So plans are not approved through preliminary plat, are approved through a developer's agreement. So this group probably knows a little bit more about a developer's agreement, that it's an agreement between the developer and the city that lays out exactly how our project needs to be constructed. So I have some details again later, talking about financial requirements that we have and then timing. So a developer's agreement always, always, always has to come after the final plat. So after we make those final revisions, we tie up the plans, we know that they work, then we move forward to final plat approval and the developer's agreement. So at this point, we know there's more work to do. There are some areas that I've identified, the entire staff, development team has identified as saying, we need to come back and revisit this issue. Typical for preliminary plat, we'll come back at final. So let's talk site and project details. You all have seen this slide quite a bit, so right now, we're at the preliminary plat phase. So we've been through concept, so that is reviewed by planning commission and city council. We go back and forth with staff, with the developer, three or four times in those comment letters. Again, us nitpicking, they're really hard work, which is sometimes hard to send that letter if it's super long to say like, shoot, you missed the mark, let's try again. So that's usually three or four back and forth for preliminary plat. The planning commission held the required public hearing, that held February 17th, so now we're at the city council review of preliminary plat. So when this project came through, through the last time you saw, planning commission October 21st, 2021, city council November 1st, 2021, planning commission February 17th, again, they held that public hearing. We sent out a resident mailer based off feedback we got at the public hearing, it was included in the packet. City council preliminary plat and rezoning is tonight, and again, final plat to be determined. We go back and forth a couple more times with comment letters, so we truly don't know when that date is going to be yet, just not knowing what the plans will look like. So zooming out a little bit, what does all this mean? How did we get here? What's important to remember? So on the screen now, I have the city's comprehensive plan on the left side of the screen, so it might look a little bit strange with our growth area, Carver suddenly looks very large, but I'll ask you to focus on city limits, which is the dash line in there. The red circle on the screen is Brookview, which is circled, the right is a little bit zoomed out. So what this map does is it guides land use until 2040. So what this map does is it guides land use until 2040. So for the next several decades, we are operating under this plan, required to follow it largely by the Met Council. We are able to make some changes, but it is an extensive process called a complaint amendment. So this project is guided low-density, single-family, which is that really light yellow. Doesn't come up great on the screen, but it's just a super light yellow, which means low-density, single-family. With that comes a density requirement. So the Met Council requires us to hit certain densities for certain projects. This property specifically is slated for three to five units per acre. We are not able to dip below that three. So it's important that across the community, we do not dip below three. So we can have some projects that hit 3.5, some hit at 10. But it's important that we stay no less than three units per acre. The map on the right is another map from our comprehensive plan, and it's called a constraints map. So it shows all the areas that you cannot develop in Carver for any reason. So that typically is a bluff, a waterway, a wetland, areas that we've identified as being critical habitat that need protection, or something that our ordinance pivots against. So as you all are probably most familiar with our bluff ordinance, this project does have quite a few bluffs on the property, and we'll talk through the topography and what that means for site layout. Sorry, I keep forgetting I need to scroll. So what else does this map mean and what does it mean for the project? We know that based off the constraints map and the comprehensive plan, this project does have developable land. We do know that it will be single-family housing and that the property owner does have a right to develop. So what does that planning process look like? Who puts together those comment letters that are scary for a developer? So it goes through the entire process with planning, administration, engineering, public services, the fire chief, the fire marshal, the city attorney, or the legal department, and the watershed district. So all of these groups do review every single time a new plan set comes in. And what we do is we make sure that a project complies with the zoning code, design standards. So a packet of design standards that we've put together that we can offer to the developer to say, here's a good place to start, here's the information that we know. The fire code, so our fire chief and fire marshal review every project. Minnesota state statutes, and then design Carver, which is our city's comprehensive plan. So diving in a little bit more specifically, the preliminary plat is proposed right now by Manley Development. So Manley is not a home builder, so the site will be sold once it's through the plan process. A project that we've seen recently similar to this is Casey with Summer Gate, who brought Timber Creek through and then sold to Lennar. So a developer brings a project through, sells to a builder. At this time, we don't know that builder. It could be someone that's in the community now, or it could be someone new that we haven't seen yet. Engineering for the project is completed by Samba Tech, so they submit Volnamang, the city's engineer, then review. So it's those two groups working together. The site right now is 22 single-family lots, a trail connection to Broadway. And again, Planning Commission review was February 17th. At that meeting, we got some feedback from residents and the Planning Commission. That caused us to hold up a little bit and make some revisions to the plan. So I want to talk through those specifically, show you the changes that we've made since that February 17th meeting. So I'm going to talk through them, and then I'm going to rapid fire flip between some pictures that will hopefully show you what we did. So first and foremost, lot reduction went from 24 to 22. So the density went from 3.8 to 3.5. Something to note on one of those very first slides, when I said minimum lot size increased from 5,500 to 6,400, it's a reduction of those two lots. We were able to work the site, tack on some square footage to each one of those lots with those two that were removed. You'll see on the cul-de-sac that more lots shifted to Mulberry. So we heard from several residents on Green Ash Drive that it felt like Brookview Court was, had a lot of residents on it with concerns about traffic. So we were able to take two lots from Brookview Court and flip them to Mulberry, which has less impact to that existing neighborhood. Brookview Court and the cul-de-sac, which is the, again, the east-west cul-de-sac, was pulled south about seven feet. What that allowed for was additional landscaping and buffering between Green Ash Drive. And maybe the least fun of all of them was redesigning the pond on the east side of the site. It ended up being a better product. I'm sure Erin would argue that it's the most fun part of the site, but not something I feel super passionately about. So the first version of the plan came in, this is what it looked like. So you'll see Brookview Court had homes going the entire duration of the site facing Brookview Court. There's also a pond access route between here, so it was a full city access that would access the pond. And then I'll ask you to keep an eye both on Brookview Court and the buffering when I switch here quick. So before and after. So this is what we put together based on feedback from residents and the Planning Commission. So you'll see Brookview Court had those two lots reduced. We flipped them to Mulberry, overall took away two lots from the entire site. The ponding, you'll see that the access route between the two, the pond and the infiltration basin have been reduced. So we moved forward with an infiltration bench, which allowed us to minimize the space that we needed and get rid of that access route. And you'll see that the street shifts south. So again, Brookview Court, the east-west cul-de-sac, and then extensive buffering has been added in that area along with a landscape berm with max height about three and a half feet. So adding some berming and landscaping between Green Ash Drive and Brookview Court. So this is the before preliminary plat, looks a little bit busier than the after. So again, preliminary plat shows things like lot layout, number of lots, design. Doesn't include things like grading, utilities, et cetera. So let's revisit rezoning requests, which is the first thing that you're asked to review tonight. So I spoke broadly, saying R2 PRD is pretty common in Carver. So you'll see on the screen right now, the areas that are starred are projects that are R2 PRD. So again, really common. I would say by far the most common zoning district that we use in Carver. So each one of these sites for XYZ was not able to hit the R2 district. We were able to accomplish a project using the flexibility of the PRD. So the project directly north, Meadows at Spring Creek, is an R2 PRD. And then Spring Creek also, kind of the access route into the site, was at R2 PRD. Again, the ag zoning is default. So it's not that the project was used for farming, it's just our default zoning. So what is a PRD? What does it mean technically in our city code? So section 50-62 allows for a PRD. So a PRD in this case benefits resulting from a planned residential district include an opportunity to protect and preserve valuable natural resources. So on the site, you'll know it's the bluff. So on the constraints map, you saw a lot of yellow, which means the topography indicated it's a bluff, something that we need to protect from things like erosion, to be able to make sure that it's there in perpetuity for all to play. So some other projects in Carver. We've been saying that this project is likely, feels like a villa of some type with a reduced side yard setback, smaller lot size, and we anticipate a pretty robust HOA with Brookview Court being a private street. So how does that compare to other projects we've reviewed recently? So the project directly north, Meadows at Spring Creek, has a similar product along Spring Creek Drive. Their minimum lot size is actually 6,000, so slightly smaller than the minimum lot size in Brookview. Oak Tree is another really good example. Oak Tree Court, or the north-south cul-de-sac, directly adjacent to Jonathan Carver Parkway, has the exact same lot size, so 6,400. And then River Bluff Estates is the last really comparable example. Their minimum lot size is 3,800, so right off County Road 40.
Erin, can I ask a question? Remind me, River Bluff Estates, do they also have a private drive?
They do, yes.
Thank you.
A couple of them, actually. So how do we get to the site? Who's reviewed it? What does it look like long-term? So again, review is completed by the fire chief and the fire marshal based on their largest apparatus, which is actually a ladder truck that we get from Chaska. So they take the measurements for what they need in a cul-de-sac, they apply it to a project, and they say the cul-de-sac cannot be XYZ based on the spacing that we need to be able to maneuver a full fire truck. So review's also been completed by our engineering department. I also will say that the number of lots in Brookview are comparable to cul-de-sacs across the city. So it's not the number of lots that we're concerned about. The fire department is concerned mostly with distance from hydrant. So they're not concerned if there's five lots or seven lots. It's, is there a hydrant within 350 feet of every house? Which this project does meet, the cul-de-sacs do meet it as well for the largest apparatus.
Erin, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So the largest apparatus we borrowed from Chaska, it's bigger than anything we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And we base our review off that truck. Just knowing that, should we need that ladder truck, it is available to us.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let's talk through the bluff protection or the constraints map that I keep referring to. So there are several properties in Carver that are bluffy. We review this quite often. There are several projects that have these same stipulations and requirements. So what we do at a staff level is we put them often in a conservation easement. So that allows us to control the, and limit the amount of digging, planting improvements that a property owner does. So the city code calls for the area to be protected shall include the bluff areas as well as the 25 tier-one setback running the bluff. So to note, I'm going to move through a couple screenshots of the plat. Brookview does not require a variance from the city's bluff ordinance. It can meet it with the lot layouts that they are proposing. So what does that mean on the site? So green outlined right now is the bluff, and then the two required setbacks are blue and yellow. So you can see that the building pads sometimes get really close to that bluff setback, but they do not encroach. What that might mean is that if someone bought a lot that has a more significant bluff impact, would be that maybe they couldn't have a deck, and that happens from time to time. We hope that the real estate agent or the seller of the property has included that information. Otherwise, it usually comes to me, and that's really a sad conversation when I have to tell them they can't have a deck unfortunately due to bluff on their property. So what else does this happen? I talked about and said several properties in Carver have them. So the most recent one that we reviewed is Hawthorne Ridge, the DR product. So same application to the plat, so green is the bluff, blue and yellow are the two setbacks. You'll see similarly, the bluff gets really close to some of these properties. Hawthorne Ridge is a good first example, the bluffs, good name for overly bluffy property. Carver Creek, River Bluff Estates, I put that, River View Estates and River Bluff Estates, both additionally have bluffs that have been through our vetting and our review process. So we've gotten a lot of questions from residents. How do we manage it? What does that look like? Do neighbors just go off the wall and sometimes put a huge garage back in the bluff? So we work with the developer and the builder, once it gets sold, on home by our education. We also include signage. So if you've been through some of the recent neighborhoods in Carver, we have conservation easements in most of them. Whether that be a wetland or bluff, we require that they put signage at each lot corner. So it says essentially, city of Carver, this is a conservation easement, don't touch it. So that signage has been really effective. Something else we require is topography on surveys. So you'll think through a building permit process. When a permit comes in, we require that topography is shown on every single building permit. At that point, our building official and our assistant building official do their review of their building code, and I do a review of the zoning code. So every time a survey comes in for a new home permit, it's reviewed by both groups. And it's my job to ensure that topography is not impacted with, if there's a bluff or if there's a project that's going to change the topography dramatically. And we require things, building permits or zoning permits for big things like big garages, down to fences and sheds. So we require a permit for most products, projects in Carver, so we're able to do that second review of a survey. We also, through building permit review, we have a site inspection. So the first inspection for any new home that is built, our building official or our assistant building official go out, and they see where they've marked house. At that point, they measure, they take the survey, they measure to the property lines, making sure the house is in the right spot. And it can get close where they say it's off by six inches. Go back, got to redo that site inspection, or they need to come in with a new survey. So we have that catch at the time of building permit review with a site inspection. Something else is, we hear about it a lot. So if one neighbor has a conversation with me and I say, hey, you can't do XYZ, you have a bluff. That person is usually pretty passionate about the bluff then, and they're pretty quick to call their neighbors to say, hey, I can do a shed, why can't they have a shed? So we do hear about it often. Another catch-all is that we are out in the community a lot. So whether that be an inspection by the building department, utility work by the public services department, outlot maintenance, or trail maintenance, we keep a pretty good eye on what's happening in the city. So red circled on this map shows the signage requirement of the conservation easement. So you'll see on the map, the blue dots are all the proposed signage locations. If I, this will be the first time and maybe last time I ever say it in my life. We might need to tone it down a little bit on this one, because there's a couple of properties that hit like four signs. So we'll figure out the closest one, maybe figure out how we can be a little creative so someone doesn't all of a sudden have six conservation signs in their backyard. Park dedication and trails. Dave, I'm going to tee up to be my backup here in a second. So as we know, anytime that there's a plating project, that park dedication is required. That can be met either with a project, land dedication, or cash in lieu of. So this property doesn't specifically have a park identified on it, but we have identified a potential trail action. So similar to Hawthorne Ridge, which is the project directly south, the yellow line that works through, it would be similar to that product, so likely gravel through the neighborhood and then down the bluff. So in the preliminary plat resolution, there's some information that we're going to change. Dave can talk through that technical change, should you be ready to make a motion at any point. We are going to require that park dedication come cash in lieu of for this entire project, so $4,000 per unit. So this trail will not be counted towards park dedication requirement since it's in a city outlot, and it's a project that we'd be working on similar to the Hawthorne Ridge project. So really site-specific. We haven't laid out where it is quite yet. We have a rough idea that's in the plans right now, but we are going to probably wait until we get on-site to figure it out. So members of our engineering team, I would, I'm going to send Brent out there because he'll be on maternity leave, so he'll be out on the property doing a little hike. But they will find the least intrusive area to slate the rails. So areas that weave up and down that allow for people to use it, because it's a pretty steep site, but also limit vegetation removal. So thinking through that, we anticipate that it might be in this location, but we have a lot to learn in that area as well. Tree preservation. So let's talk about tree removal, our city code, what it means for this project specifically. So section 50-220 is tree protection, which requires on every project 40% of the total DBH. Its diameter at breast height is DBH of deciduous trees, and height in feet of coniferous trees within the disturbance shall be protected. So what that means is that when a project comes through, someone needs to go out and mark all of the trees. They need to inventory them. So they take things like species, health of the tree, and then the diameter, and they provide it to us in a tree survey. At that point, we're able to apply this equation of that 40% protected. So it's a little bit small on the screen, so I'm going to read. Brookview could remove 818 inches, and the actual is 678. So they're below that threshold that's required of the 40%. Something else to note, I was really candid about this at Planning Commission. If you read my Planning Commission staff report, I didn't effectively communicate this. So I want to be really clear during this meeting is that tree removal is only slated right now for the red area. So taking the site overall, the bluff will not be impacted, and largely, a majority of the trees on-site will be protected. So it's just the area in red that has tree impact. And I totally get it, tree removal is one of the worst parts of any project. It's such a bummer anytime it happens, but any number of trees can feel like too many. So I could come in and say we're taking two trees, and someone would probably say, hang on, that's many. So totally get that, I'm right there with you. So 981 trees were included in the tree survey, 57 were marked for removal. It's not apples to apples, because again, we go by diameter, but roughly 6% of the trees surveyed are slated to be removed for this project. So let's talk about how we get some of that back through landscaping and buffering. So our city code does require that each residential lot gets a tree. This one actually proposes two. And also throughout the area of Outlet C, which is the space here, which is private, will be maintained by the HOA, has the berm, has really significant landscaping. We've heard from residents, and it's one of those areas that I want to revisit at final plat. This area here, so east of Mulberry Lane, there are quite a few utilities in that area. I want to figure out if we can buffer it somehow, but I don't think over-storied trees are the best route, because I think they will impact utilities. So we'll continue working with the developer to figure out, is there a different type of tree? Is there an arborvitae? Is there a bush of some type? That we can do some buffering that maybe has less intense of a system that could impact our utility system pretty significantly, pretty fast. So one of those items that I have pinned that we need to work through when we get through final plat. And then the formal tree and landscaping plan is on the screen now. So you'll see two trees roughly per lot, extensive buffering. And again, this is the area that we want to work through. So hang on, if final plat comes through, I anticipate that area might look a little bit different, or I hope it will. So in wrap-up, let's talk about a couple of things I missed, and then we'll open it up for council discussion and community comment. So I talked a little bit about that developer's agreement. agreement. What does it mean? What does it do? Who signs it? So it's a document drafted by the city attorney, reviewed by city staff. So Dave sends around a document with a bunch of blanks that we fill in to say, I know the specific part of the project really well. This is what we need, or this is the fee that's required. The developers' agreement is recorded against the property. So again, here in Carver, even if the developer leaves. So at any point, the city can draw on that developers' agreement and the letter of credit. This is the point where we adopt plans. So again, tonight, we're not doing the grading plan, the utility plan, the urban control plan. We do that up a final plat and developers' agreement. So again, this is reviewed by planning, engineering, fire, administration, legal, public services. So it ties to that plan set for the developers' agreement. At that time, we also hold a letter of credit. So what that means is that the developers require, provide us a letter of credit for 125% of the project costs. One of the big catchalls for that is that it's determined by our city engineer. So the engineer on the other side does not determine that number. We do. We look at their plans, what we know to say, this is 125% of the project cost. So that's a catch. So if at any point the developer defaults, we can go to the developers' agreement and say, the streets aren't being constructed the way you said they would. And if they say, I'm walking away, I'm not going to do it. The city then steps in, hires a contractor to complete that work with the letter of credit money. So we hold enough to complete a project should we need to. It's not often that we need to refer to, refer back to a developers' agreement. It's usually when things get a little bit spicy with a developer who might not be following our rules, but we try really hard not to get to that point, just because it can be a little tense and hard. But we do have a developers' agreement and a letter of credit. So again, it ensures project completion to city standards if the developer or the developer, the builder walks away. So again, tonight, it's the plat and it's the rezoning. So again, it's a formal planning document that shows number of lots, lot layout, street layout, drainage and utility easements. Going to stress again, does not equal plan approval. We need to continue working on that. So the next step for this project would be final plat and developers' agreement, which would come forward should you choose to make a motion tonight. And if we get through, again, that back and forth of those comment letters. So at this point, I'll open it up for council and then community comment.
Right. While this is not a public hearing, at this point, I'd like to open it up to community comment for members of the community who want to address the council about the proposed Brookview development. A friendly reminder that city council is here to listen to your point of view and to consider your perspectives. Neither the city council nor staff will debate or dialogue with community members on tonight's issues during this meeting. All questions related to the Brookview development will be recorded by staff. Depending on the request, they will either be responded to later in the meeting or will be followed up by staff in the coming days. In order to ensure everyone who is interested in the ability to address the city council, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes and keep them specifically related to the Brookview development. Staff will operate a timer. When your time is up, it will be the next person's time to speak. Please know that we are listening so that if someone addresses one aspect of the project plan that you're concerned about, you don't have to repeat it. I appreciate the time and energy that is often needed to address an issue in a public setting. With that in mind, in order to maintain a safe and welcoming space for all points of view, I will not allow booing, clapping, cheering, the use of noise makers, talking over one another, or any other behavior that might discourage a community member from feeling safe when addressing the city council. With that, anyone who agrees to these guidelines and is interested in addressing the council about the Brookview development can now come to the podium. Before commenting, please say your name and address. So I think what we'll do is we'll start with the folks who are in the room right now who are interested in speaking, and then we'll go to the Zoom. And Brenda, do folks need to message you on the Zoom if they're interested in? No, we'll just open it up. Okay. So anyone in here?
Yeah, I'll go first.
Great.
So this is the five minutes, right?
This is the five minutes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was, no, this is all, sit down, make yourself comfortable.
Sounds great.
This is, sorry, this is all new and different. And I get that this might be some of the first time that you guys have been in the council meeting. So that was a different agenda. I don't, now have five minutes.
Yeah, no, well, can we hold on? I appreciate you giving me the explanation of how, how this works and stuff. So I appreciate that. And I apologize if I came off aggressive with that.
Not my first time. I've had more aggressive folks.
Really? All right. So I got a little room to work then. Just kidding. All right. Sounds good. So good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It has been mentioned that there's not-
I'm sorry, can you just introduce yourself again, name and address?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. My name is Matt. I live at 1903 Green Ash Drive.
And Matt, okay, it looks like the green light is on there.
Yep.
Okay. I just want folks on the Zoom to be able to hear you.
Yeah, absolutely.
No more interruptums. Go ahead.
No worries. All right. Sounds good. Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It has been mentioned that there has not been this amount of resident engagement before. To me, that proves how much weight there is in this decision that is made tonight. This proposed development is not the right development for this land. I understand and respect that the land will be developed at some point. I also understand the need and want for growth within the city. What I don't agree with is irresponsible growth. One of, if not the most crucial aspects of this proposed plan is the way it interferes with the bluff. Nature has prevailed and defined the ecological norm for this bluff. This development will adversely affect the bluff and have drastic effects on the numerous natural resources in this area. As has been found on the plot map, this development is being squeezed into this plot of land. There are several lots where the tier two bluff line is within inches and one lot where the tier two bluff line shares a line with the buildable area. What I don't understand is how can anyone in good faith say that the tier two bluff line will not be altered? Within that same bluff ordinance, it states that no tree with a diameter greater than six inches may be removed within that setback. Has it been determined that there's not one tree in that setback over six inches that will be removed? It was mentioned that the development is like working with Hawthorne Ridge in regard to the bluff setbacks. I'm no expert in reading plot maps, but not one lot in Hawthorne Ridge has the tier two setback in the property line. This proposal has roughly 50% of the lots having the tier two setback in their property. In Hawthorne Ridge, there was plenty of buffer for the construction crews to safely dig and pour foundations without intruding into the protected bluff setback. In writing, it was advised that the city would not pursue a walking path for the narrow strip of land in the plot of land. The city states, and I quote, "that they try and not add trails in people's backyards when homes are established. Many people would not be super happy to have their semi-private backyard turned into a trail corridor." That's a very impactful statement, and I and 13 of my neighbors agree with that. That statement is one that shows the city is looking out for all of its current residents. Why isn't that statement being held true for this development? After discussing with some legal experts, it is understood that should our homes have a significant decrease, decrease in valuation, we will have the substantiated right to pursue legal representation for the significant devaluation of our homes. What steps does the city have in plan to handle that liability if it were needed? The two stormwater ponds concern me. When looking at the plot map, it appears that the gradual grade for the wet basin pond is going to not only intrude into the yards of those homes, but into the buildable area. Is it the city's plan to have an easement for almost the entirety of those homeowners' backyards? It is also stated that there needs to be a strip of natural vegetation in order to have natural filtration, filtration of pollutants of the water prior to going into that wet basin. Is it the plan for those backyards to be filled with natural vegetation versus a sodded backyard? The dry basin will also need to be have grading done in order for it to work. Again, I'm far from an expert on reading plot maps, but the dry basin is in the two, tier two bluff setback. That means that it will need approval for alteration. I would like to know how anyone can think that changing the grading for that pond is not going to adversely affect that bluff. In the 2040 comprehensive plan under section two land use, there's some verbiage that I'm having a hard time understanding how this proposal is following that plan. It states that natural resources are beneficial to the social, environmental and economic vitality of the community. To ensure their quality and benefits, it is essential to plan and manage natural resources. The 2040 plan also states, the city of Carver will promote, preserve and enhance natural resources within the city and protect them from adverse effects by regulating land disturbances or developmental activities that would have an adverse and potentially irreversible impact on environmentally sensitive land. I would say that the two bodies of water that have been designated as special water and impaired water would be considered sensitive land. This proposal is in need of variances for it to be approved. The city has explained that the need of variances is not out of the norm. One question I have is, has the city reached out to the Met Council and asked for a variance for this plot of land? This plot of land is extremely unique to this city. It has a very dense tree population. It is home to numerous wildlife. It has a bluff. It has two designated special bodies of water and is great concern to many residents. The variance I would be asking for is the ability to have less lots per acre. Like I mentioned earlier, I understand that this land will be developed, but imagine being able to have less homes with larger lots. That would solve most of everyone's concerns. As I'm here in the moment, reading this letter to you, I reflect back on all of the hours I've spent researching this proposal. The only way that I can quantify the amount of time that I've spent is through my son's comment. Dad, why are you always working on your computer? Luckily, I was able to turn this into a teaching moment. I talked to him how important this project was to all of our neighbors and friends. I was able to discuss the facts of working hard for what you believe in is right. You need to be respectful, number one. You need to give an all out effort and you need to be educated. I have learned more about city and state ordinances and apparently time constraints, three or five minutes, than I can ever imagine.
Well played.
But I told him that no matter what the outcome is, I know what I thought so, I believe is right.
Matt, there's your time. So I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
This proposal is not right for this land.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Because Matt was the first one, I'm going to just reiterate again that we are not going to answer your questions. We're going to let everybody speak. And then you've seen staff is scribbling notes furiously. They'll answer them all kind of in mass at the end, just like you did with the planning commission.
May I ask a question? I have-
You had your five minutes.
I have a, would you like, I actually wrote down the questions that I had. Would that age you guys?
Why don't you share those with Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Okay.
Mayor Johnson?
Yeah.
I did not get Matt's last name.
No.
All right. Who's next? Going once? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ryan Hunt. I reside at 1891 Green Ash Drive. Greetings and thanks for understanding my concerns tonight. With all that's transpired in the past couple of months pertaining to the development of Brookview, I wanted to take a few minutes to ask some questions, point out a few discrepancies, and voice my concerns regarding this development. Concern number one, I posed a question to the city planner and city inspector via email regarding the containment of stormwater runoff for the bluff ordinance. The response I received, and I'm still a bit perturbed by, and would like to know is who grants the authority for the city inspector to change the wording in the city ordinances? My question to them was, how does the city plan to contain all the stormwater runoff from this project since some of it is draining to the bluff and some of it is draining to the stormwater ponds held within the meadows at Spring Creek Retention Ponds? I quote Aaron Schmidt, first and foremost, I quote Aaron Schmidt, "First and foremost, when I answer your questions, please note that the word contain is a word I would replace with manage going forward." So under my understanding, that's great that the inspector who will be onsite has officially decided to throw the entire bluff ordinance into his own vocabulary and reluctantly has, officially, and reluctantly has already decided that he has more authority to override the actual verbiage of the bluff ordinance rather than follow the wording as it is wrote in the ordinance. I am of the oppression that city ordinances are designed to protect residents and the city from outside sources, essentially attempting to alter or destroy what normal life is for residents. Please let me know if the ordinances are just words in a document that does not need to be followed, which it appears here. I'd like to build a trailer park in this town. Concern number two is the overall technical aspect of the project. Based on the bluff and the tier one and the tier two buffer zones, with tier one and tier two having areas within the actual lots as well as a stormwater retention overflowed dry pond, how does anyone anticipate actual excavation in these areas? This is a plan that may or may not fit on paper, but it certainly will not fit in reality. There is no possible way to excavate without being in violation of the bluff ordinance for tier one and tier two areas in numerous spots throughout the project. Concern number three, how can you have buildable area within a stormwater retention pond? Is there any buffer requirements? Example, an erosion area with prairie grass with natural filtration? From what the plan is showing, these homes will essentially be a part of the stormwater retention pond. Fertilizer from the yards will be directly deposited in the stormwater retention ponds unless there's some sort of natural vegetation buffering this pond, which from the plan showed, does not show any room for this. Concern number four, who becomes liable once the developer has developed the land for the maintenance of the stormwater retention pond? I know it's the city, but is there an easement for over half of the development that provides access for the city to maintain through their yards? Are the homeowners granting the city, are the homeowners granting the city getting an easement for over 50% of their lots? Are they willing to take on the liability that the homeowner won't overflow, have drifting or runoff of fertilizer that will go into those retention ponds without any buffer? Concern number five, on lot two, block two, the driveway shows a 10.3% grade from the front buildable area to the street with a 20-foot front setback and a five-foot sidewalk already contained within the driveway. Will a market with disabilities acts, which has a maximum cross slope for a sidewalk of 2% be obtained? How will the driveway be constructed to allow the sidewalk to be in compliance with ADA standards? At 10.3%, can people actually enter their driveway? Or is this just another example that fits on paper but not in reality? There are other driveways with the same concern throughout this entire project. In closing, I would like to ask the council tonight to vote based on the representation of the residents and not that of outside developers. We have elected yourselves to keep our interest in the best interest of the city. That is why you're sitting in the seats you have. Those seats are our votes in helping keep Carver, Carver, and all that Carver has to offer. Rolling topography, natural lands in a non-urban field. If we wanted plastic playgrounds and overdeveloped land, we certainly would not be here tonight as we'd most likely be living in surrounding communities who have done that already. I ask that when you vote tonight, you look at all the facts, hear all the voices and all the information in front of you. I ask that you, I ask that you ask yourself if you would enjoy a street through the backyard of your property. I ask that you ask yourself if you'd rather see this city preserve the landscapes we have or fill the developers' pockets with profits. And lastly, I ask that you envision Carver in the future with developers being able to do as they choose with the lands that they, that we have, as this will set a precedence for all future developments going forward. Thank you for allowing myself the freedom to speak and thank you for keeping Carver, Carver.
Thanks, Ryan. Next. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ryan. I'm at 1911 Green Ash Drive.
Right, what's your last name?
I'm sorry?
What's your last name?
Rodriguez.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for allowing me time to speak here this evening. I do share a lot of the same concerns as my fellow neighbors here. Obviously, we won't go back through all that. My biggest concern right now, and obviously Aaron did speak to it as well, is the east side of Mulberry where the utility road to those drainage ponds is going to be. I understand that they're still addressing the possibility of additional buffer. Our, a lot of other neighbors have concerns about the retaining wall that backs up to that lot right now. And the, the distance between that road and that retaining wall, being able to support eight inches of class five with three inches of topsoil and the possibility of traffic of utility vehicles going in and out of that area. I understand that it may not be heavily used, but having skid loaders and heavy utility vehicles going through there, is there some sort of process that's going to help determine that that's not going to long-term impact that, that retaining wall that's currently set in place? And if so, vibration, compaction, if that does long-term cause issues with that retaining wall, who's going to be responsible for that? Is that going to be on the homeowners whose property is back up to that retaining wall that is currently owned by the meadows of Spring Creek? Or is that going to be something on the city due to construction of that road? And then the prolonged use of that road at that time? That's really the biggest concern that we have on that side of it. I know that there's a lot of other concerns the other side, but we're just looking for more answers on the long-term impacts of that, that road being back there and whose responsibility is going to be if there are long-term effects on that. Other than that, I appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks, Matt. Who's next? Come on up.
Good evening.
My name is Margaret Thompson, and my parents own undeveloped property that's adjacent to this proposed development. It's just to the south of there where you see that circle come down. Today, I'd like to share that because water and runoff in a natural state today flows north at that south boundary of the proposed Brookview plat. Therefore, we would like to make sure that the final implements a design, or we find it insufficient to implement a design change that sends any water in the direction of the bluff. It is insufficient to direct any water towards the south, towards the bluff, and expect that a man-made fix will accommodate the uncertainty of severe weather events. A grading plan that works, which I understand is not being proposed tonight, but for the, I want to look, talk to the future, a grading plan that works will maintain a northerly flow of runoff for the southmost about 150 feet or so of the Brookview development. Just at that water that continues, that's going away from the bluff today, will continue to go away from the bluff with the final. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Patty Thompson, and I'm, I live at 11633 Palmer Road in Bloomington. And I'm also the daughter of one of the owners of that same plot of land. And I'm, I want to just say that realistically, I think, you know, there's like a housing shortage. So I'm for the development in the sense that I think we really need houses. And a lot of people are having kids these days and grandkids, and they realistically are going to have to have someplace to live. And so that's, you know, even though the houses are close together, it's, it's also a good thing for the environment to have less infrastructure between homes to save on things like, you know, utilities. It's just- It's just, it's a way to be more economical. So, really, I don't know, um, there's good and bad things about the, the development, but I would say all in all, I'm for it. And, um, and then, as my sister Peggy mentioned, um, we really hope that, um, the cul-de-sac on Mulberry Lane will eventually be lowered to the existing grade, because that will allow for the current drainage direction, which is like away from the bluff. It's very important to us. And also, um, we're concerned about our neighbors to the east side there, because as water rolls off of these rooftops and impermeable surfaces, um, it might be directed straight east towards this other person's bluff area, which has had erosion in the past. And so, instead of that, we want to make sure that, like, when the next plat comes up, they'll do a very thorough job of creating a ditch, so that that surface runoff will get, um, not go over the bluff, but rather go towards those filtration ponds, so as not to erode the bluffs any further. But thanks a lot for your time.
Thanks, Patty. Anybody else in the room? Come on.
Hi, I'm Jenna Hunt, 1891 Green Ash Drive. Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, there are several outstanding questions that I posed that were never answered from the planning commission meeting on February 17th that I would like addressed. In the interest of time, I won't list them, however, I humbly ask, a thorough review is done and a response, uh, is sent to me for my questions. I trust the city council sees the many glaring issues that remain surrounding the stormwater and bluff requirements and that this project will be tabled tonight. However, in the unfortunate event that it is approved, I'd like a formal response from the city regarding the for, the enforcement for any violation that is discovered. Uh, I've confirmed that this area is designated as having two both special and impaired water bodies within one mile. The risk of ecological harm this project poses is off the charts. Minnesota's construction stormwater permitting is an extension of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is part of the Federal Water, uh, Clean Water Act. Because this project would disturb more than one acre of land, there are state and federal agencies such as Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the State Pools system, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency that we as residents will be partnering with to ensure compliance with all laws that govern this unique property during and after completion. Uh, please refer to section 50-194 of the city ordinances. Remover, removal or alteration of vegetation states that removal of or alteration of vegetation within a bluff or tier one buffer area is prohibited. Uh, it goes on to say a few other things, and then it says, "removal or alteration of vegetation within a tier two setback area is at least 25 feet away from the top of the bluff may be cleared, so that a lawn may be installed, but that no tree the diameter of six inches or greater may be removed. Removal or alteration of vegetation within a tier two setback area must receive prior written consent from the building official or a designee." Uh, please refer to section 50-195 of the city ordinances. Uh, no earth may be moved nor fill, nor may fill or be excavated, or excavated material be placed in a bluff or within the tier one bluff area. Uh, alterations in grading and filling within the tier two bluff area shall not be permitted to increase the rate of drainage. Movement of more than 10 cubic yards of material within the tier two setback area may be permitted with the approval of the building official. The approval shall only be granted if the proposed alteration does not adversely affect the tier two area or other property. There is zero, there is zero margin for error within this project. Should be, should it be discovered that any vegetation is altered, uh, any pollutants aren't properly handled or controlled, or any other violation occur, there are several people that will be continuing to engage with federal, federal, state, and local agencies that protect this land and its resources. We will be watching. Please note on record that my family and I feel as though that any alterations within the bluff zones will absolutely have an adverse effect to the land and the water, water on this property. Uh, please refer to section 50-196 of the city ordinances. Enforcement states that for any violation of this section, uh, the city building official may issue a summary order or red tape to stop the construction. It goes on to say that any continuous violation of this section is deemed hazardous to the sensitive bluff area and to the city and to secure, uh, to secure compliance, the city may proceed under the Minnesota Hazardous Building Act and cause the structure to be removed. Uh, any violation of the terms of, of this section is a misdemeanor, and each day the violation continues is a separate misdemeanor. Uh, pollutants at construction sites caused, uh, such as concrete, washwater, petroleum products, chemi- chemical construction materials and sewage may pose a risk to both surface and groundwater. Increased volume of runoff can cause severe erosion of the bluff and of the receiving waters. I am actually gonna skip to the most important part in the interest of time here. Um, finally, I've been made aware of, and I do have this correspondence right in front of me here, that the developer has made, uh, with residents of our community that is in full manipulation and is bribery. His, he has offered them first right of refusal to choose any lot that they want before anyone else, and in his own words, without even to have to, have to put down a down payment. He then goes on to say that he's willing to hold any lot that they choose until after the land is developed. Again, reiterating, reiterating that they would have preferential treatment by being able to pick a lot before anyone else. He then paints a picture of them having eternal privacy without having anyone, anybody else building behind them. His specific words, kind of a win-win strategy for you guys. In exchange, he requested they come here tonight and speak in favor of this project. Extending preferential treatment, as is being done here, is a bribe. Circumventing rules and regulations is not only unethical, but it also is illegal and expressly prohibited. Issuing or accepting bribes is a serious crime. Both civil and criminal charges can be levied against those suspected of being involved in kickback schemes. This further proves that in addition to the major risks this project poses to the bluff and this, and the specials waters, waters around it, it must be halted immediately in the best interest of the land and the residents of our community. So, if anybody wants a copy of this, happy to provide it.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else? Come on up. Don't be shy.
Hey, everybody, my name is Zane Dai. I live at 1899 Green Ash Drive, and-
Sorry, could you repeat your name?
Sure, it's Zane Dai. And I don't know anything about tree removal, bluff maintenance, special water. I work in healthcare, that's not what I do. Uh, my only consideration is, think about, consider mandating a handout, disclosure, whatever, to potential home buyers before they get to closing that outlines any type of limitations they have on their property, or any type of responsibility they may have if the bluff were to require maintenance, or even just a ballpark estimate on what their costs of private road maintenance may be, because I can just say that I don't know anything about any of this, but if I got to the closing table and was told, oh, hey, by the way, you're not getting a deck, that's not gonna happen, I would be really upset, and I would already feel locked into that purchase, and, you know, already emotionally invested in it, because, you know, I did just build a home, and it is still new and exciting for me. Um, and the only other thing I had was, once it's been decided, considered, uh, could someone just kick out an email or a letter about what type of trees are being considered for that buffer zone? Um, and kind of how developed will those trees maybe be when they're planted, like their initial height? And I suppose I can Google the rest for how fast they grow, but that's all I had, so, thank you.
Thanks, Zane. Next? Come on up.
My name is Reed Welch, I live at 1813 Rad Up Bridge, and I'm also on the planning commission. So, I guess I just wanted to come and, you know, make sure I, I got a chance to talk to everybody. Uh, the planning commission took this very seriously, I know Joy was at the meeting, and I'm glad a lot of residents here showed up as well. Um, so, um, and I'd just like to compliment Aaron and, Aaron and Aaron on, on their work to improve the plan. Um, I will admit, when I first saw the plan, I was very hesitant to approve, and if you've read the minutes, which Brenda did a fantastic job summarizing, um, the commission was very concerned about the density. Um, well, I agree, probably not everyone's gonna get what they want, but I, I think this is a much, much improved from the initial concept plan, and, um, I just wanted to, you know, just kinda come up here and, and just say that, and I think you guys are doing a good job, so, thanks.
Thanks, Reed.
Yep.
Next?
Hi. Hi. My name is Tina Schmoller, I live in the meadows at Spring Creek also, but on the other side at 1896 Spring Creek Drive. And I just wanna comment on, um, all that has been said about protecting the bluff and the trees. When we moved in to our subdivision, we were one of the first houses there, and we picked the lot that had a little grove of trees behind it, and it had all the little signs up that said conservation area, and had all the barriers, so nobody could touch it. But lo and behold, after all the construction of houses, those trees just began to die. And the, it changed the flow of water, drainage, everything, going into that little grove of trees, and then after a couple of big storms, boom, they started coming down, and our houses are there, you know, too. And, um, so then, once the trees were dead, we had to have somebody come and remove them, because we weren't really supposed to go into this conservation area. So, the city agreed to come out and remove them, but now, what was a beautiful scenic view behind our house was a bunch of dead trees. And so then, we went on our own dime and bought several mature trees and had to plant them in this area, but then we knew if any of the other existing trees start coming down, nobody's gonna replace the trees we just planted, so then we'd have to, so, all I'm sharing is that it all looks good on paper, but really, you can't do that much excavation without causing some damage to the existing trees and nature that has been there for a long time with a certain thing happening, you know, because we're changing the way everything is happening now to the trees. So, um, that's something to consider, you know, and they, I think they used the right amount of distance between where they were building and all that, but, you know, you have to dig pretty deep when you're building a house, so those roots go out pretty far. And that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Tina.
Sure.
Anybody else? I don't know if we have anybody out in the hallway who's willing or wanting to make a comment? All right. Is there anybody on the Zoom who's interested in speaking?
We'll open it up to the Zoom participants and have to tell them.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, um, folks, it looks like here in council chambers, we have, uh, most everybody who's wanted to speak has spoken, so if there's anyone on the Zoom, uh, why don't you go ahead? I can see everybody's, uh, names, so why don't you go ahead and take yourself off mute if you are ready to speak, and I will just kinda look to see who catches my eye first. Karen, I see you, why don't you go ahead? Can you please introduce yourself, give your name, uh, first name, last, and address, please?
I'm Karen Moscow. I'm at 1825 Spring Creek Drive, uh, on the, uh, north side of the meadows of Spring Creek. I regularly walk this neighborhood, down Mount Hope Road, back up Broadway, all of the existing beautiful nature area. And as I look up the hill, coming back up Broadway towards this potential development, it really scares me as to what that, um, could potentially, the number of houses up there and so forth do to that, uh, bluff, the trees on it, and the beautiful nature area. I would like to see the council, uh, go back and reconsider the number of houses, the density, and go back to an R1, not an R2, so that we have far fewer houses and far less disturbance to, um, the nature that's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else on the Zoom who would like to speak? I'm gonna ask three times, folks, um, anybody else on the Zoom who would like to speak? Anyone else on the Zoom who would like to speak? This is your last opportunity to speak for this evening. I am not seeing anybody else go off mute. Room, I'll do the same thing. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
I'm Ken Thompson. My wife and I have, uh, owned that property to, to the south of Mary Berry Lane. We've owned it, owned it since 58, and, uh, we wanted to build there and, uh, didn't have the money to do it, so we ended up buying a house in Bloomington, and, uh, we've been living there ever since. Now, what I'm concerned about primarily is the grade that is being proposed for Mulberry Lane at our property, at our north property line. There's a prop, there's a bluff protection system that's in, uh, in place for, by Carver, and it seems strange to me that an engineer would be proposing to put a road in to that property that is two feet above the existing grade, and is sloping to the south. It makes no sense to me whatsoever, and I don't really understand an engineer or designer proposing such a thing. I have plenty of experience designing residential subdivisions, um, and it just doesn't fit. It's not logical. And also, another thing that I wanna mention is that I've been assured by, um, Kurt Manley that there is a balance of cuts and fills on that property. I have worked with that situation long enough so that I know how to balance, uh, dirt. I know that I also have to allow for shrinkage in the dirt, because when it's hauled and compacted, it takes up lace, less space than, uh, than it did when it was in its natural form. This property does not have a balance of cuts and fills. There's a huge difference between the two, and it's in the, uh, in the direction of not enough fill to take care of the, uh, fills on the property from the cuts that are made. And I, I've been assured by, uh, Kurt, uh, yeah, Kurt Fair, uh, Manley, that the dirt does balance. I'm not new at this, and it does not balance, and there will be a lot of trucks hauling dirt into that property. I'm very concerned with the idea that the existing grade from our, my property line goes to the north. And it not only surprises me that somebody would suggest that is, that that, um, at that property line, there's gonna be a two-foot fill. Now, the two-foot fill is lower when, than what they originally planned for. The original plan had, I think it was about a foot, uh, two, two and a half feet higher than that, and they want that property to be, uh, sloped to the south, towards the bluff, bluff? It's a ridiculous situation. I approve of the subdivision, and I don't have much else to be concerned about, what I'm, uh, as far as what I'm talking about, but it can't be brought forward in the manner it's proposed. That elevation should not be above my prop, what it is at the property line right now. It, uh, it has to be lower, and the slope of that dirt has to go towards the north. Mulberry Lane has to slope to the north, so it's lower, and they, they have to find some other way to get rid of the water, rather than put it right on my property. I shouldn't say my property, it's my wife and I. I'm sorry.
Good catch, Mr. Thompson, thank you for your confidence. All right. All right, room, anybody else? Anyone else with comments? Third and final call before we close it off to comments for this evening? All right. Thank you all for your comments. All right, Karen, can you help remind me where we're at? Oh, go ahead, Brenda. Oh, go ahead, Brent.
I think if it's okay with the council, we'll try to address some of the questions. So I'm gonna lead off with Mr. Thompson. I, I guess I would suggest if you could, if you wouldn't mind leaving your phone number with Aaron Schmidt, I would propose that.
Aaron, raise your hand.
If uh, if you could meet onsite with Aaron and our city engineer, Dan Lottis, in the back, Dan, you want to raise your hand? Um, whether it's onsite or if you just want to meet here in person, it might be just good to kind of walk through this. Um, I think Aaron and Dan can meet your needs rather than trying to maybe talk through it without maybe a plan set. You might just want to walk the land and make sure it's meeting your needs. And it sounds like you have some experience to lend there. Um, and I would say just in general, that would be the comment. It's noted, I know Aaron and Dan heard that related to stormwater retention and the um, the grade on um, Mulberry Lane and the retention. So if you, I know Aaron and Dan got that comment. So that's something that we can address. Um, the retaining wall question that Mr. Rodriguez had, uh, Dave or Aaron Smith, do you have comments related to impacts to an adjacent um, retaining wall?
Brent, I'm in council and mayor. Um, from a legal standpoint, I'm not, I'm not sure there's much for me to chime in on. I imagine that retaining walls um, are part of the engineering review. Um, and that takes into account numerous city standards and other things. And in this case, um, you know, I, I don't think it's um, very great idea to get into private water law. I mean, to me, um, you know, that's potentially where that's heading. Um, and so I guess if there are specific comments about um, the retaining wall and whether it can withstand, you know, the sorts of impacts that are anticipated on a street like this with the traffic involved and everything else, I would, I would certainly defer those questions to city engineer.
An additional comment. I reached out to Chad, the public services director, just asking about that access route. How's it used? How often? Uh, Chad let me know that it's likely going to be used two to four times a year. So maintenance and mowing will be the two things that we use that access route for. And then a skid steer is the largest piece of equipment that will likely be in there twice a year. So I am not an engineer. I can't speak to the wall integrity, but it's not going to be a heavily trafficked area.
I'm gonna jump to Mr. Noel's questions. Um, so we have full-time inspection on the construction site. So Bolton and Mink will have a full-time inspector out there. Um, so, doesn't mean that something won't happen, but we have somebody onsite to see if it does. And I would say, this is a general comment to you folks. Um, we're on the same team as it relates to the bluff ordinance. I can, I've lost track of the number of times that uh, either myself or somebody on our team has been on the other end of a, a not very pleasant phone calls as it relates to some, telling someone they can't do something in the bluff or the city enforcing its bluff ordinance. So um, we'll be arm in arm. If you see something in the bluff, you can call me, you can call our inspection team. Um, this community is, you know, no pun intended, but it's kind of built on bluffs in that it's done a lot of work to protect bluffs and it, and that won't um, get a pass with uh, this development should the council approve it. Um, has it been, so the, there's a tree survey done um, in relation to that. So um, the city engineering team reviews that tree survey. Um, the ordinance state, the ordinance states that the bluff in tier one second must include a permanent protection. What is the city's plans for this? So that is related to the signage. Um, I think uh, I think it was Zane that had a comment related to your next question about allowing future property owners to know about the deck. I thought that was a great idea, that we can work into the developers' agreement. Um, it makes me think of a, you know, a comment that I received a number of years ago from a property owner that uh, actually just lives down the block from me, that they were concerned that there is going to be lights where the now quick trip is going to be and that they were hoping there weren't, weren't going to be uh, starlights there. And I'm like, ugh, I wish somebody would have got to and told you what the zoning was for that property. So I think that's a great, great idea. Um, as it relates to drainage, um, I'll, I'll kind of toss that over to Aaron Schmidt uh, as it relates to the question, Aaron, is, has, is the city prepared to ensure backyards of Green Ash Drive residents aren't going to have an increase in drainage uh, due to the, due to the buffer? So I, I E., I would, I think the example would be is that is there going to be drainage that gets into their backyards and puddles, et cetera?
From the berm that's being proposed. Yeah, they'll have to um, maintain a drainage swale along the property line so they can't just direct water onto the, to the existing lots in the Meadows at Spring Creek.
Thank you. Um, as it relates to decrease in, in property value, I, I think there's, um, and this is an editorial comment, so um, because there's no way to like, prove this out. I would say that anecdotally, um, the Carver Crossing Apartments, which is just south of Carver Elementary, uh, in this old space, we had, used to have a gymnasium about five or six years ago. And we had a four-hour council meeting with about three hundred people. And the comment then was if those apartments go in, our property values are going to go down. It's going to stunt development and crime is going to increase. And since that development has gone in, property values have gone up. Crime is the same as it has been. And development, as you all know, has, has boomed in the city. So I can't really speak to that other than my experience. There isn't anything that tells me that it's not really a condition for approval that I'm aware of, uh, city attorney. So that would be my response or the city's response to that. Um, as it relates to backyards with, within the grading of the storm pond, is that up to code? Aaron Schmidt, can you address that, please?
So the, the backyards will have the yarded area that will drain towards the pond. And then Chad, public services team will, they'll maintain a, a buffer between the actual like, maintained turf and the actual water's edge. That will be, that will be the buffer that will be left in place.
And that's included in the drainage and utility easement.
Correct.
And I think you spoke to this, Aaron, but there's, there's that vegetative buffer around. It, it's not, it doesn't just go from lawn into the open water. Could you speak to that, please?
Correct. That's all in, in public services, um, maintenance of that. They, they intentionally leave that last. I, I don't remember what it is on a dimension basis, but they leave unmaintained, you know, lawn grass in place before it hits the water itself.
Uh, as it relates to easements, so there's public easements over any area that the city's going to have to touch or maintain. And then related to that, when a prospective home buyer purchases their lot, they're provided a survey, and that survey also shows those easements. So they're well aware of, of where those easements are. Um, there will need to be grading done for catch basins, which include into the tier-two bluff area. Um, can you speak to Aaron or Aaron? Can you, can you speak to any catch basin work that might be done in the bluff, tier-two bluff area? Is that accurate?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay, so that's something we can get back to you, Mr. Noel.
Thank you.
Um, what is the city's plan for if a tree in the tier-two bluff setback is taken down? So I, I think someone had mentioned it earlier. There are impacts, you know, if our inspection team, whether it's through Bolton and Mink or our building inspectors, notice that or frankly, any ordinance infraction, uh, there are impacts. There are defaults within the developers' agreement. There are ordinance, as, as someone alluded to, it could be a misdemeanor. So um, that's not something the city takes lightly. We want to have a positive relationship with the developer, but our ultimate responsibility is to the property owners of this community. And so we'll, we'll uh, enforce our ordinances to the full force and effect. Um, the city, this is a question related to variances. There's not a variance request for this project. Um, it's contained within the planned residential development, so it's not considered a variance. Um, the stormwater pollution plan, uh, yes. You know, once, once the final plan documented is, if you want to make a request to the city, um, and if you want to leave your name, we can add you to the list and we can certainly send that out. Um, your question related to single-family versus villa. Um, so the city takes in the application, so we don't propose it. So like, for instance, when you and your wife built your home, and let's say it was a two-story, um, we're not going to say, have you thought about putting in a rambler? We take the application, and if it meets the building code, then we accept it. And so the same would hold true for a development application. They're gonna apply for things and we review it. We don't make suggestions on, have you thought about doing townhomes here? Um, we review what's submitted and then go from there. Um, can you require sediment control on the bluff to prevent intrusion? So we, the, and I, I responded to an email, I think to Mr. Hunt this afternoon. Um, so the silt fence is required along the property edges on the, along the grading line. So that, that'll prevent erosion control. Um, I think, I think that, those are the questions that I had listed there. Um, so enforce, uh, let's see, I have planning commission meeting questions. Um, Ms. Hunt, I'm, I'm happy if you, if you have questions that you think that we've missed, I'm happy to respond to them. Uh, but we just don't have the availability to run through and see which ones. If you tell us which ones we've missed, we'll happily respond to that. Sure. Uh, the enforcement of the ordinance, again. Uh, you're welcome to contact me as a city manager, our engineering team, Aaron, community development, our building inspection team.
I love that, though. Like, who would we go to if we weren't?
Any one of us.
My question is, like, what if, what if we're not getting the answers from you? Who do, who do you guys then?
So, so if you're not, if you're not happy with any staff response, you can come to me as a city manager. If you're not happy with uh, my response and my work, I'd invite you and anyone else to come to the city council and address the council during community comment. That's your best rope, where all five of them are here to listen to your concerns. Uh, there is a pretty robust uh, standard for PCA permitting. And it's site inspection. Aaron, can you kind of walk uh, the residents here through that process and how that's enforced on a pretty regular basis?
Yeah, so um, this, this will require an NPDS permit because of the land disturbance that was mentioned. So that's something that the um, the SWIP plans will be in the final plan set for the project. It'll be, um, that permit will be obtained by the developer. And then throughout the whole construction process, um, inspections occur on a regular basis, both routine inspections and then inspections that happen after a rainfall event. Um, and then those um, inspections are reviewed. If there's deficiencies that are noted, they're addressed, um, the issues are remedied. Um, so that continues through the whole construction process. The city receives um, copies of all those inspections. Um, will also accompany the contractor many, many times um, through the inspection process itself. So that is something that's very common on all, both development, you know, and public projects, so.
Um, as it relates to concerns about assurances the developer may or may not have made, uh, the city is only responsible for, so as the city attorney for the council and staff. So I can't really comment on anything additional. Dave, do you have any comments on that?
No, I, is this, just getting at the comment about.
Assurances of lots, et cetera.
Right, yeah, you know, those comments, you know, it's, it's not the council's job and mayor and members of the council, you know that. It's not your job to be the arbiter of facts that are brought to you by the public tonight. That's, that's not your role. Um, you also know that, um, you know, public comment alone cannot act as the reason that you approve or deny something. You have to take into account your ordinances and your legislative discretion and what you think is best in the city's best interest. So um, you know, it really boils down to an exercise in applying those levels of discretion. And um, you know, I don't think any of us can speak on behalf of what's happened or how, you know, the developer in this case has chosen to, to market his um, development. But that's between him and whomever he's working with. And the best we can do is, is look at the applications on their face, decide whether they meet your code requirements, um, listen to the public and, you know, do your best to make a decision in that respect. So hopefully that answers that question, but that's the best advice I can give you in that regard.
And then I think, I believe this was from, sorry, Zane, I forgot your last name. But the um, the type of tree in a buffer, we certainly can make that available to, to you and probably post that to the website or if anyone else is interested, disconnect with Aaron related to that. Um, Aaron, would you mind speaking to if uh, the Met Council has a variance process and why or why not the city would partake in that or if it's even possible?
Sure. So the Met Council would have a comp plan amendment process that would be required for this project. I will say they, uh, we don't take them lightly. The Met Council doesn't take them lightly just for our 2040 plan, the work that we put into that project. Um, they wouldn't go below three minutes per acre, though. That's the requirement to meet the require, or to meet the specifications they need for us to connect to their city sewer. So going below three is not an option at the Met Council. They could allow us to go up if we wanted, but I don't think that's the goal. But going below three is not an option.
And just a kind of little add-on, when the Met Council finds that the city's not in compliance, all, the city's sanitary sewer has flowed through the Met Council. And so they have the ability to kind of stop that development if it doesn't meet their standards for density. So just a kind of a little piece to that. Uh, Mr. Hunt, I'm sorry that that was your experience with Aaron. I can tell you, he's one of the most honest people I've ever met. And so I can tell you, the experience you had, was it inadvertent? Just from my own experience and I know our teams. I can tell you, our ordinance isn't subject to change through, via an email. So he, along with myself and our entire team, is required to follow that ordinance. And so if, if you're in a situation where you think we're not following it, I'd encourage you to contact me directly and say, hey, I don't think you're following this ordinance and we'll follow up with you appropriately. Um, there, I'm kind of double backing on some of this, but I want to make sure I hit it. There are easements throughout the entire development. Anywhere that the city was going to have to uh, conduct future maintenance. Uh, Aaron, would you mind speaking to the building area and how it interconnects with uh, the stormwater ponds on kind of the west side of the development? East side, sorry.
Okay.
Cause there's a question related to buildable, buildable area and the natural vegetation and benching.
Sorry, I'm not tracking on that one. On the, on the east side?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
So on the plan, on the slide I showed you, there's the lot area, there's the setback area and the easement area. So I think that's just, we're looking at plans incorrectly inadvertently, so we can work through that. But you can't build a house in a pond that area is protected within the easement. And that's in compliance with our typical standards, the area east of Mulberry.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused in the part that we're talking about. So can we either pull back up the entire, um, or one of the slides, just so I.
Do you mind if you give me a second and I'll get the plans actually up?
Absolutely, thank you.
So I get into that, um, there's a comment from Mr. Hunt related to driveways. Can you, and the grade? I know those plans are subject to change and review. And so you might see a grade on a driveway and say, well, that needs to change in a comment letter. But could you comment to that, A? And then B, can you comment uh, to the, if the city is required to meet ADA standards related to driveways?
Sure. Yep, so um, as Brent mentioned, these are preliminary grading plans at this point. So you might see a driver grade of ten point two percent. That is definitely a comment that would come in the final design process. Um, you're looking at all those grades um, to ensure that they're in compliance and sidewalk grades included. So they would have to maintain a ADA compliant sidewalk facility as part of their development.
Then there is a comment related to fertilizer. And I don't know if it, there was a question um, in there. I know there are various regulations from the PC. I don't know if Dave or Aaron, you feel comfortable in addressing uh, concerns related to fertilizer getting into stormwater ponds. Anecdotally, I think it happens unfortunately in a lot of areas throughout the community that are adjacent to stormwater ponds. I just want to kind of lob that over to you from a technical aspect, if there are any things unique or specific that we could share to, to help with related to that question.
I'll defer to Aaron on the technical components, but you know, it's, it's important to keep in mind that when these plans are being reviewed, there's a significant number of requirements and regulations that our engineering team and our planning team are looking at. Um, you know, these incorporate, what are called BMPs, or best management practices with regard to stormwater and how stormwater is collected, where it goes. Um, none of this is overlooked. And in fact, it's um, a very substantial part of, of any development. And you know, when ultimately, uh, any development gets approved and, and you see a, a final plat approval at a development agreement, that agreement's going to tie directly back into these final plans, which are all based on adherence to these very strict standards. And so, um, you know, any concerns that may exist today, um, I suppose I can't be surprised by that just because plans aren't refined yet. I mean, preliminary plat is preliminary in nature. And you know, developers would be really hard pressed to spend, you know, the kind of money that is required to be spent to finalize plans. Um, and city staff would be overburdened with work if they were reviewing final plans at this stage just because it doesn't make sense to do that this early. So that kind of dovetails into the whole, here we are, preliminary and what that means and what we're approving. Um, and um, I would just say, um, in terms of, of stormwater and best management, that's. that's an important consideration to keep in mind. Then I'll let Aaron talk about any of the technical components.
Good answer. I don't have a whole lot to add right now.
Aaron, can you bring the microphone closer? They're having a hard time.
Is it working?
Yeah, you're just...
You have to speak into it.
Okay. I really don't have anything to add at this time on the fertilizer. Best practices, best management practices, as Dave alluded to, will be followed for stormwater design. That buffer component, which has been brought up a number of times tonight, will be adhered to going forward on an ongoing maintenance basis. So that's about all I have to add at this point.
So I believe that answers all the questions. Anything I may have... Oh, yep, sorry.
Okay, so this is the east side of Mulberry Lane. So the ponds is here. I believe the edge of the pond is the 932, this elevation here. So you'll see the buildable area and setback blocks here, with that easement line being the dot. So you'll see that the entire ponding area is within that drainage and utility easement, which is an unbuildable area.
And just to add to that, we've been talking about that, the natural buffer. The easement, the drainage and utility easement line that you see on the plat goes past the high water level of the pond for that specific reason. So the city controls what happens in that area.
Mr. Aaron Schmidt, I have a question. When you reference that, like, buffer line, is there anything that is on the current diagram that would show that? Like, when she mentioned 930, you know, and then you go to 932 and you see the easement?
We wouldn't have a plan that would include the buffer. It's just within that easement.
Okay. It's more important that it's within the easement, but then that would be on a final?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to conclude that, I believe that responds to any ones that I may have missed or inadvertent. So please feel free to follow up with me tomorrow or after the meeting if you have additional questions. And in general, I would say, I know that this is an important issue for everybody in the room. I have to say that, like, I am amazed and, like, applaud your efforts. Like, you are one of the most prepared groups for this type of process. And the preliminary plat is one thing, but like, digging into the design drawings, when they are, kind of as Aaron alluded to, they're at their infancy. And so I get copied on the letters. I don't review, I don't review the technical pieces, but I see them go from 20 pages down to three pages by the time they get to preliminary plat. And so the, I think this is kind of the postcard for good government. You've made your points, you were respectful about it, and, you know, it's going to be considered by the council. But before we get to kind of the end, I just wanted to thank you for participating. It's what makes communities, communities. So with that, I'll throw it back to the mayor.
All right. All right, council, who wants to lead off with questions or comments? Joy.
Sorry. I apologize. I don't have any further questions about the plan. I mean, this is preliminary at this point in time. So, you know, I mean, I was on the planning commission for over 15 years prior to coming on the commission. I have seen numerous developments go into the bluffs. I have seen our bluff ordinance get updated and better over time to make sure that we are protecting those bluffs. I think the city has put a lot of focus on protecting those bluffs as we've gone through a lot of development in the last 10 years. So I feel pretty confident in our bluff ordinance to protect those natural resources. I also have a lot of confidence in the developers' agreement process. We've seen some of the things that possibly can happen or what we can avoid with those agreements. So I feel pretty good about that. And then, you know, I was at the planning commission. I heard all of the comments and feedback that was there, and plus this comment, this feedback here tonight. I really applaud the efforts of not just the residents providing specific feedback to get us to this point, but I also appreciate all of the feedback to help us get to that final plat point. You all have brought a lot of details that I know are going to get refined in the final plan and appreciate all of that input to make sure that we take a look at all of those things. So I really feel like good progress has been made to date to address a lot of the concerns around density. The shifting of the lots to Mulberry, I really think, has had a big difference. The berming, some of the design around the ponds, I know a lot more details have to happen, but I applaud the efforts that have been made to date. I really feel like the community has been heard on those. So I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot and calling you first, so I knew you'd be prepared. Go on to your next one.
Eric, can I be able to answer this? So that 6% of the trees were going to be taken out for the actual... How does that compare to what Hawthorne was, over on Off-Round?
I can't tell you specifically, but I would say it is similar where we knew that there was buildable upland with some pretty minimal tree removal. Those projects are pretty similar with the amount that we were able to preserve. So I would say it's a good comparative. I just don't have that number off the top of my head, but a good example.
Reserve the right. All right. Lori?
Yes, I do have some questions for Mrs. Aaron Smith. So I have questions from the packet. And it's towards the end, so I have some specific page numbers, if that helps. And, oh, yes, and I can give you the page numbers. So page 29 of 43, on the rezoning. So I understand the lot size is reduced from, by 600 square feet?
Correct.
But is it just four lots?
So it is for four lots, but we don't do it specifically for those four lots.
Do we say four out of 22, or if, okay?
We don't. So Meadows, the entire project, their minimum lot size is 6,000. Just the Villas required that. We can do lot in blocks specifically. We could call them out, I suppose.
Yeah, if it moves to final plat, I think I would like to see that verbiage.
Okay.
And one thing I would add to that is that the rezoning is one component of this. The other is a preliminary plat, which is approving the general layout of the site, which includes only four lots being below that 7,000 square foot number. And so if a final plat came back and it didn't specifically, wasn't consistent with the preliminary plat, the council would have the ability to push back on that. And, you know, the main thing about the final plat is it has to be consistent with what the council approves preliminarily, and that is the layout. So although the rezoning doesn't necessarily encompass that, the plat itself would if you approved it in its current form.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then on page 34, having had some experience now with developers' agreement, when it comes to the private road, is that part of developers' agreement, or is that a separate document?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So typically, and this is what we did recently with Timber Creek, which also had a private road, is we will require, and it's included in the preliminary plat resolution that's before you tonight, a requirement that the developer enter into a specific agreement that's separate from the developers' agreement called a private road maintenance and easement agreement. So it records against the property, all the requirements about maintaining that private road in the long term. And then it gives the city the right, if there is ever any concern with upkeep, maintenance, repairs that aren't happening, it gives the city the right to go out and do that work and then assess those properties that gain access from it for that, for that maintenance work. Typically, we would never hope to rely on that. Many, many communities throughout Minnesota use private roads in this fashion. That agreement would also give the city other access rights, like, you know, emergency vehicles, for example, and enforcement folks can go out and use that road. But we build in those types of protections to make sure that, one, the HOA is legally obligated to take care of it. And two, if they don't, the city has the right, but not the obligation, to go do it. And it's not the rest of the taxpayers that cover those costs. It's going to be the actual folks that benefit from that road.
Okay. All right, thanks. And then I have another question. Sorry to jump around within the packet, but back to page 29, section two, item C, when it talks about the trail, and then just that trail connectivity is important to me. So I guess like two or three things here. It calls the trail being a field fit. So maybe, you know, I'll have to learn more about that, but not for today. And also, then later on, there's something, but I think it's, anyway, it's a rustic trail. So I'd just like to see some consistencies with that.
True.
And then with, if it does move forward with the trail connection, and I realize it's, you know, too early to really know exactly where that would be, but how do you ensure that's not somebody going through people's back private yards? So I have a feeling it must be outlots, and then the trail going up to the sidewalk, you just need a wider easement?
Correct, yes. So when we determine where that location will be, there will be a larger easement between the two homes. And then Outlet A, which is the entire bluff property, will be deeded to the city. So it will be our property.
And I know it said that, too, similar to Hawthorne.
Correct.
Okay. That is my questions.
Aaron, could you please get the presentation pulled back up for me? And I'll ask a few other questions while that happens. The ownership of the retaining wall. Who is in ownership of the retaining wall that came into play about where we have the drive-in for the ponds?
So I looked on the Carver County GIS. It appears that it's in the property owner's lots.
So each property owner has a piece of that retaining wall, basically?
That's what it looks like. I would have to pull up the plan set for Meadows at Spring Creek, but from my first blush, that was my reaction to it.
Okay. All right. Let me know when you get that pulled up. When I'm looking at what's in our packet and on page, I think it might be the last page, 42, you're looking at where the trail comes out into Mulberry Lane. Earlier in the packet, it showed it coming between the houses up onto Brookview Court. So we're seeing two different things here, and I'm assuming there's going to have to be a trail easement over it. So what are we looking at for what's the actual plan?
We're not sure yet.
Not sure, okay. I have a little bit of an issue if we decide to move forward. The trail dumps straight into a street, and it's not connected by a sidewalk. When it was up on the Brookview Court, it also entered into the street, but the sidewalk was very near it at the end of Brookview. I know that we, our ordinance has that we have a sidewalk on one side of the street. But again, if there can be somehow that it's mitigated where it doesn't just dump into the middle of a drive street.
True.
But connectivity to trail, I think, is great. We have another more rustic trail that came down from another development that just went in. And we all went out and walked it and tried it, and to make sure that that was something we wanted to keep. And so I think it is important that if we move forward to have that. Let's see. So we're talking about, I know that this isn't, you know, final plat with all this. We are talking on the grade of the driveways and the sidewalk ADA. If we're looking at the grade of, so that would have to be in compliance before we move any farther, right? That they would be graded at the correct levels to make sure that the driveways, where they meet the sidewalk, is ADA compliant. Is that correct?
The driveway likely doesn't have to be ADA compliant.
With a sidewalk crossing it?
Yeah. The sidewalk will be put in at the 2% maximum.
But where the driveway meets the street can have a steeper slope.
So what is our maximum grade on a driveway? Do we have that in by ordinance?
I don't know if it's by ordinance. We generally shoot for 10% maximum is what, kind of like a good rule of thumb. But the cases where it's above or less than that.
Okay. Can you, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, you may not, can you think of one of the streets here that would give me an idea what grade, like, let's say Sixth Street, what grade is that? Or Fourth Street? I just can't get a visual on what 10% might be.
Well, I know Mount Hope's a lot more than 10%.
I believe you, I believe correct on that.
Six, six is like, whatever, 6%. It's not, it's not that steep, Sixth Street.
I'm trying to think of 10% myself here. It's a tough one here. At the top of my head. If you look at Sixth, yeah, that 5% to 6%.
Sixth Street is 5% to 6%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Totally, council member Mock, that's something that I have seen the engineering team and Aaron's team and community development really hammer on because in the best interests of the homeowner, it's better to have that driveway as less, or with, as flat as possible, as we all have seen, probably like Mr. Witt's drive, got Sixth Street and some other ones in the downtown. It's not advantageous to anybody to have a really steep grade for a driveway and then want to intersect with the sidewalk. That also can create some issues. So I can assure you that the team will be kind of pushing down on that to make sure that there is a steepness. That's probably not the great.
It's not a great plan.
My wife's an English teacher, and she's probably frowning right now watching.
No, and I have no doubt that you would be on top of it, but when we're looking at this, because it is close to the bluffs, I really need to get a good visual about what it's going to be like, because I am concerned about drainage. I think Mr. Thompson had a very good comment when it comes to the drainage. So the drainage, I'm going to need a little help back here, that we had a lot of information. So when we're talking about which way the drainage is going to be pushing, going south is one of the way that the drainage, the drainage expectations are going to happen?
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of tee you up here, Aaron. Can you just describe for council member Mock and the council and those in the audience how the drainage system works, kind of through the conveyance of storm drains and pipes, and how kind of overland drainage is considered, etc.? I think that would help to kind of set a baseline for how we're looking at not only this, but all of our projects in the community?
Yes, I can do that. So in general, the basic principle is that the existing drainage patterns, so where water wants to go today is how you need to allow it to continue to go in the future. So related to Mr. Thompson's concern about the water, you know, going to the south, we can't send new water to his property that would not be going there today. So things are installed as part of the grading plan, such as drainage swales, not allowing water to go, you know, one way or the other, depending on where they're moving today. So that's a basic way that water is handled. So you'll pick up the water in a swale and then route it to where it wants to go and match existing patterns.
Then can you just, one more thing, can you explain how Mulberry might be tipped toward the bottom of the bulb of the cul-de-sac? But there could be storm drains, etc. there to catch that by design? Can you get into that specific?
Yep. So the, right now, as it's currently laid out, about half of Mulberry, so the southerly half of that road is, the profile of the road is drained to the south, but the water is being collected in the cul-de-sac with a storm sewer system. And then it's routed back into the pond. So like, all the water that's running off of the road isn't going to just run, you know, straight south off the site. It'll be routed back to where it is supposed to go.
From Mulberry or from Brookview?
From the north, yeah, the north-south road in Mulberry.
Okay. I did? She wants something. Let's see. Aaron, can you go back to where the, we're talking about the bluffs with the tier one, tier two? Okay. Can you possibly zoom in just a little bit when we're looking at block one, off of Brookview?
Sure.
Yep. So this one here, and I realize that this is, you know, a big fat yellow line drawn on a plan, but it looks, it's very near, obviously, the home pad, okay? And so I'm curious as to how you're going to dig a home and not disturb into that.
So something to remember that this is the buildable area of the site. That's not necessarily where the house is going to go. So the house can fluctuate on that site a bit, so it can rotate if it can maintain that front yard setback. So that's the maximum area that you could build, so.
Yep, and I, yep, I understand that's the maximum pad size, but if they choose, they have the, I mean, the developer, the builder, has the right to go to that maximum pad size. I don't understand how you can build next to that and not interfere with that bluff. Is that tier, give me the tier number. Is that, is that?
Two.
Two, thank you. And so it's something I'm missing on here. And so is something I'm missing on tier two bluff that you can disturb that during building?
No, and I can't speak specifically to construction techniques, but I will say I believe that you could fit a house in that area. They might need to do excavation from the front to the back, but Erin, if you have strong feelings about that, but.
Not right now.
I was gonna just try and move the screen on.
I would just, as a, just kind of to round that conversation out, when a building plan is submitted for application to the building inspection department, that's something specifically Nick and Brian on our team will look at. And so if, if for whatever reason, they can't fit that home on their, or they're proposing to Holland concrete trucks, et cetera, those are the types of things that Erin's team will mark and say, well, you can't do this and so. It's like, it's, it's a different scenario, but it's similar to weight limits or weight limits in the spring for concrete trucks. They might have to change their construction schedule or methods based on when road restrictions are on or off in the community. And I would say that this is similar to that based on what you're seeing here on the, on the map.
Yeah, I just happen to be partnered with a concrete driver, so yeah. So when I'm looking at this, I see that same issue on a couple of different lots here, four, six, and then the one I was trying to move down to, which I can't. Maybe if you want to zoom out a little bit on that one now, since I had you zoom in. So although I understand in, in the ideal world, and we're looking at it on paper and it looks great, but I also know how construction works on the site, I have a really hard time with those home building pads being that close to that. I, I, I think it's going to cause some problems to have them that close. If, if there were something, let's say they're digging on Lot Four and they're digging the basement and that, they have some issues in a cave, then, excuse me, Courtney. What happens then if, because then they would technically have violated the bluff ordinance? Tell me, maybe this is an attorney question, yep, what happens then?
I, I don't want to get too into the weeds on the bluff ordinance, but it's my understanding that you can move a certain amount of material within tier two setbacks. That's not against your ordinance. No earth may be moved in the bluff or within the tier one bluff area. But just looking at section 50-195, section two of that code provision talks about the fact that some material can be moved within the tier two setback area, which makes sense to me if you're thinking about the fact that structures can't be located, but could be located right up to it. How, how would that work? Is that kind of what you're getting at, Councilmember Mock, with respect to how can you do that without moving something? I assume that's why the ordinance has that language in it. I guess I can't speak to the reasons for it specifically because I wasn't involved in drafting it, but I have to believe, I mean, common sense would tell me that's probably why it exists, so.
And when, when you say some, what, help me out with what that means? You can move some earth, so, or some?
There's a 10 cubic yard provision in here. And again, I don't want to delve into the specifics on the fly, but I, I assume all of these plans and any movement within bluff areas and the tier two setback and the tier, for, for this specific project are gonna be closely monitored by staff, engineers, and then ultimately during construction inspections. So I have to believe that's, that's what will happen.
We, let's see, Erin, this one's back to you. What are we at at density per acre right now?
3.5.
3.5, okay, and three is our minimum. So how many, if we were to go down to, we were to require to go down to three, and this is if, how many homes, but do you know what have to come out to go down to three? You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. How many, when we took out those last two, do you have any?
3.8 to 3.5.
Okay. Okay, so roughly a number two homes could be removed to reach, but still be at that three per acre. I have this down too, when we were talking about the association and the private drive, I would assume that those type of things are included in, when you purchase your home, you're made aware of association dues. I haven't had those in a little while, so I can't remember, but. All right, I'll leave the floor for a minute, I'm sure Courtney has some questions.
I do. Let's see, Erin, my first question is at the, the end of Mulberry Lane that would be used to access the Anderson, Thompson?
Thompson.
Property. Is that gonna be the width that'll have to abide by our ordinances for driveway width, correct?
Oh, well, yes.
I love that the trail connection is in there. I think it's gonna be very true to a lot of the trails in the city of Carver. It's gonna be a very robust and potentially challenging trail, which I think is great. I hope that we can find a site for that because that trail connection would open up downtown and Snake Trail a little bit more directly to a bunch of folks, not only in this development, but also Meadows and potentially even the folks that are a little bit east of there as well. The other question, kind of feeding off of, let's see, Mr. Dye's comment about the close, the letter at closing and that kind of thing. You have that map that showed where all the conservation easement signs were gonna be? Is this an opportunity to do something different that says specifically bluff? And just, I don't know that I need an answer to that, just kind of throwing that out there as a question because so many of these, you know, the issue is, unlike, you know, Oak Tree, where it is a conservation easement, and even Hawthorne, I'm thinking of some of the ones off of Ironwood, where it isn't necessarily a bluff issue. We're talking, this is absolutely a bluff issue, so let's make this as clear as can be and get those in as soon as possible so that, I would imagine that in the process of building a house, when you're visiting the site and walking the property, that they're really clear that those are there, so there's no surprises when you want to build a deck or a shed or anything like that.
True.
So, just throwing that out there. I also wanted to say, you guys, this is tough and I appreciate, I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. I'm often asked what's the most surprising thing of sitting in these seats? And it truly is the lack of input that we get. This is the most attended, I bet that this is the most attended council meeting that we've had in this building, which opened in September of 2019. It's not the largest meeting that I've experienced, but I, I appreciate the work that you've done here, the courage that you've taken to speak in front of a group that's not necessarily always somebody's forte. So I appreciate the, the participation. What's the hardest about sitting on this side of things? Is having to make the best decision for the most amount of people. And with that, at the city of Carver, we have some documents through our ordinances and the Design Carver 2040 Comprehensive Plan that help guide us through those decisions because we can't do one thing different than the other. Consistency is really key for that. So that's what we're looking at for a lot of this, as kind of Erin said in her, in her presentation. I also think the impact that you guys have had has been significant in the month since the planning commission. And now we've seen the developer decrease the lot size by two, that's 8%, and add a berm and all the other stuff. I've been, you know, for the past eight years, between being on council, mayor, and being on the planning commission, I've never seen a developer kind of make those kinds of concessions between concept plan and preliminary plat. So I just want you guys to know that your voices have been heard and that there have been changes to this, which directly corresponds to your request of the planning commission meeting. So that's all that I have right now. Glenn, you have something?
Yeah, I have one more thing, just to address some of Christie's concerns about the, the tier two. And this would be up to the developer and the whoever is your home builder, but it would be more of a, a selection of what style of housing would be there. I mean, if you put a slab there, a slab on grave, there's gonna have minimal, minimal disturbance to the, to the, to the bluff. And that, when I looked at that, I was like, well, depending on what they build, that'd be all up to the developer and the builders and your homeowners, whoever ends up buying there.
Glenn, I think on the plans that it actually said basement, is that correct? Yes, 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 okay.
That I didn't see. That's all I got.
All right, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's all right. I like the site, I like the way it's laid out. I do have concerns about the end of Mulberry, but with the way that the drain sewers will, will run that down to the pond, the issue of that ponding won't be, I don't think that'll be as drastic as Mr. Thompson's concerns are. Looking at the berms, I think a three and a half foot berm with ample, with ample landscaping will be sufficient. I wish I can get the, do you have the screen where it's got the green ash residences?
Erin, you might as well just leave it up.
Yeah, just, just as Erin's digging through that, I wanna kind of, just so the audience can hear this, I want to ask the city attorney to kind of follow up on something because, you know, one of the things that I think has woven within this conversation tonight is bluffs, and it's very important to the residents, it's very important to us as a city. And so we talked about bluff protection, and then if I, my ears perked up, you know, we mentioned like there, well, there's this exception, and if I'm new to the process, I'm thinking, oh, okay, now there's this new process. So I guess I would ask formally that the city attorney prepare a memo for the council, kind of running through the bluff ordinances and its criteria that we could share with the council at the next work session, but that we could also ship out to the residents because just knowing how dedicated these folks are, I want to save them from like having to do, and I'm sure they'll do research on their own, but I'd like to offer them some of the research that you've done that gets into the tier one and tier two and what the ordinance says because when we have these types of conversations, a lot of things are said. And so ultimately, the ordinance controls, and so I want to make sure that they have access to the same information that the council does, and then they can make their future arguments at final plat or whatever, or if it gets to final plat, and feel as educated on the process as everyone else does, so. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
That clarifies my concern about the, the way the berm is, will be sitting there up against the, the backsides of the, the existing residences. Other than that, that's all I have now.
Okay, so, you know, I've kind of honed in on a couple of these lots here as we get close to the, to the bluff. And this is a question, I guess, for the city attorney. So because we're looking at homes that are built here, and right now they're at basement, they, they literally can't do anything once built behind that home. You can't put in a slab for a patio? Is that correct? Am I looking at that correct? Okay. And then that looks like it's gonna be the same for a couple of other lots here? And I can't, now that we took, I said, we just gotta leave that up, Erin, I'm just gonna keep going back. Okay, so then it looks like down on six, down on, six down on Mulberry Lane, possibly, oh, that's another six, two sixes. I, I, I struggle with building homes that lock people into something where they can't expand and use basically anything that's behind them. Now, I realize that people hopefully are buying that with that understanding and knowledge, but I think we know that human nature isn't always that way and sometimes things end up in property that isn't there or ends up on, you know, a piece that shouldn't have been built on. Now, this is gonna flip back. Is there, if we were to require the removal of, let's say, two more lots that brought it down to, that brought it still above a three density, could we do that and request the redesign so that we have lots that are a little bit more usable? Do I, do I have, I mean, I'm speaking for myself only. Do I have the legal standpoint to say, if it was just me to say, this isn't working? I don't like this design, I think it has, it's restrictive on these lots? Can we require you to go down by two more?
You, you have some inherent discretion on the rezoning request. The issue there is these lots can be constructed right up to that bluff setback because that's what your ordinance allows today. And so I think the council has a very limited discretion to require a developer to create more buildable area behind the bluff setback, if that makes sense. Because your current ordinance says you can do it. And yes, this will certainly impose limitations on a future home buyer, but I think all the feedback today was really helpful. And, you know, one thing that the development agreement will certainly include, if we get to that point with a layout like this, is for marketing of those lots to make very clear to prospective home buyers that these are limitations you have because this is what the city of Carver requires. And, you know, one example I would give you, Councilmember Mock, is if somebody owned an existing lot right now that happened to have a tier two bluff setback that extended into the back of it, they could build right up to that tier two setback and then sell the house to somebody else. And you, as a city council, would not even see that because it would just go right to the building official, it would be constructed. And so I want to be a little careful about the level of discretion you have and how it might affect what comes, what would come back if you were to require a reduction in lots because that doesn't necessarily and can't require a developer to, you know, create more space back there when your ordinance doesn't currently allow it. Or, excuse me, does, does currently allow it. So probably a little more information than you were looking for in the response, but I,
Nope, that's.
The best I can try to explain it.
Then I have a question right back for you. So when we're talking about saying the, the builder, when they sell it, they'll have to, you know, disclose this information? This, as a city, we can't control that, can we? That the builder sends it out, we can, Erin's shaking her head, yeah?
Oh, I was agreeing.
Okay.
Well, what we can do is put language about that in the development agreement. And keep in mind, this agreement is recorded against the entire plat, meaning that if a home buyer is, and it doesn't always happen, people don't look at recorded documents when they're buying a home, but if you, you know, are mindful enough in that process and making such a significant investment, you would look at that sort of thing and maybe you'd notice it, or your realtor would notice it. I mean, these aren't things that we're hiding from. The city's ordinance is a very public document, anyone can access it. Anything recorded against a lot you're gonna purchase is a very public document. And in fact, when you get title insurance, which everybody who buys a piece of property, you know, the bank will do that, and many times the home buyer gets individual policies, they'll reveal those documents and they'll give you copies of it. And I understand that many people aren't well-versed in sorts of language that are, you know, built into those documents, but that's why we can add in a requirement for a developer to market properties, you know, with such information, make that available to people. It's really the best we can do. And if there comes a time in the future when somebody comes to the city council and complains about that, we can say, look, we put it in the development agreement, we impose language about the developer having to reveal that to you, and our, our ordinances are very public. And if you're buying a lot and a piece of property in Carver, and you might have plans for that lot and that, and that home or building or whatever you have there, it's probably a good idea to see what you can and cannot do, you know, with city regulations in place. So I guess I'll leave it at that, I don't know.
Councilmember Mock, I'll also just anecdotally add, that's one of the hardest parts of my job, is when someone calls me and says my realtor said I could. And it's, it's really hard to be the person on the other side of that line to say, sorry, they said that, but that's not true. So, I know this is anecdotal, but for everyone in this room, next time you buy a property, call the city. Talk to them, figure out what's happening, what projects might happen, what they know about the property, just because there's a lot of due diligence that needs to go into probably the biggest purchase of your life.
And Chrissy, you know, I, can you go back to the slide where you showed where all the easement, or conservation easement signs would go? I think that's the other thing to remember, I know you know this, but I think that's the other thing to remember, like, that backyard is gonna be plastered with signs that either say conservation easement, or if we discuss it further, say like, do not cross, so, um, it'll be pretty clear to them, hopefully not to cross that line.
Um, so I wanted to stay outside of just these questions, and this is just to the, to the folks who stopped by here tonight to give us all of your feedback and provide us with questions. So, the, it's hard to see the change, right? We all know that, like, you look out your back, you like what it looks like, that's why you bought, and it's hard when change comes. I've lived in growth communities outside of Carver before, where I got to have the barn behind me, and it was the sad day when it was gone. Um, we do have, uh, you know, the road has been stubbed there, I appreciate, and I can't remember who said it, but that you know that some point in development is gonna happen, it will happen back there, um, which is painful, you know, it can be very painful. So, when we're looking at this, it's, this does not come up, come with, you know, light of heart and light of mind here, because we have been studying this, and I have been studying this, and making sure, and with, obviously, I've had quite a number of questions along with the rest of the council. So I want, no matter how this, uh, moves forward, I want the residents here to know that this is not like a light undertaking for us, because this really is, we understand it affects your lives, it affects our lives, it affects the entire community's lives, so. Um, I know that we've had a few questions, and this'll be, I guess, my final comment, and this is my own. Um, I do have enough questions about, uh, the, um, excuse me, the tier one and all of the bluff, and I know that Brent has and Erin have talked about that they will be getting back to us with some information on this. Because I don't have that information, I, I would prefer to table this once we have that information. And I want to say that with the, with the knowing that that doesn't mean, um, unfortunately to the folks who come in here, that I'm gonna say, I'm denying this, you know, I'm gonna vote against this, but I just feel like if there's a few things that are left hanging out there, I would rather have those and know them, and whether this goes through looking exactly the way it does right now, at least I've got those answers. So, I'll throw that out there for the rest of the council to speak about.
Glenn, anything from you?
Um. I like the way that this development fits into that particular property. I know that the way that the Mulberry Street was carved in was for the homeowner, or for the land property owner to do their development, they didn't know when they were going to, but the time is right. Walking the property, um, it fits. Um, and I'm, I don't have any hesitation in moving forward with, uh, with the, um, adoption of the rezoning of the Brookview property.
Um, similar to Councilmember Glenn Henry, I don't have any, um, hesitations. I have enough information.
Yeah, I. I guess I'm not looking for you guys to discuss that, I was just looking to see if you had any additional comments.
No, no additional comments.
But do as you see fit.
No more questions or comments, but I, I, I don't wanna, um, stop anyone from discussing.
I guess I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, is that there's still a lot of work to be done for the final plat, right? And I think we've heard a lot of feedback, we've all expressed questions and concerns about certain areas that are gonna be worked out. Right? And we have another opportunity to review this. And I'd like a lot of those details worked out, right? And we kinda know where the concerned areas are, and after going through, um, team developments through this town, a lot changes between, there are things that change for the better between preliminary plat and final plat, and those details and answers get worked out, so. I'm looking forward to that.
Looking for a motion?
Good.
Can I say one other thing too? Before we forget to, um, should the council be so inclined to approve the preliminary plat resolution this evening? Staff does recommend one simple revision to ensure that it's very clear that the obligation to pay for the trail construction is the developer's responsibility, and Erin had mentioned this, um, during her, um, presentation tonight. Um, so that motion to approve resolution 111 dash 22, um, would be with one amendment, and that would be to remove the reference deducting, um, the trail construction costs from the cash-in-loue park dedication requirement. And that's in paragraph fifteen of the resolution, if you wanna see specifically where it is, but there was some back and forth about that, and the version that's in the packet tonight didn't reflect staff's most recent, um, goal with respect to that, and in light of the PRD, um, that's staff's recommendation, just to make sure that we, protect our right to get the cash-in-loue, and also tie the, the trail construction to the planned residential development.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Uh, just the processing, Aaron, council, I'd suggest after you take action, whatever action that is, on those two motions, that we recess for ten minutes, just to stretch legs and use the facilities, et cetera.
It's like you're reading my mind. Um, all right, um, any further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 02, 2022 rezoning property for Brookview.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry, and a second by Councilmember Knight. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just, sorry, I'm getting to the page, so I just wanted to make sure that this is for the rezoning of the property from Ag to.
R2.
Yeah, perfect.
Good. Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, uh, we have another motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 111 dash 22, approving the preliminary plat for Brookview with said amendments for our council.
I'll make a second.
As to the trail and?
Cash-in-loue.
Cash-in-loue.
Dedication.
As long as the minutes reflect my comments, which I'm sure they will, that's perfectly adequate.
Okay, great, thank you. We've got a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I will make a second.
And a second by Councilmember Sayer, any further discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that, um, as we go through this vote, that, um, the way that I'll be voting is because of the fact that I don't feel that I have the information about the bluff and a few other things that we talked about that I would prefer to have first, thank you.
Got it. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Um, all right, do we need to do a roll call vote? Okay, uh, I'm not sure who gets the pleasure, but could we do a roll call vote?
I can do it. Uh, Councilmember Henry?
Aye. Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock?
Nay, Christie Mock.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson.
All right, uh, motion passes, uh, for one. All right, thank you all. Um, I think we need a motion to recess for, let's say, ten minutes and come back at, uh, let's do, at ten to ten. I'll make a motion that we recess for, uh, and come back at nine fifty.
I'll second.
We've got a motion, uh, by Mayor Johnson, and a second by Councilmember Mock, any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. We don't need a motion or anything, right? All right, uh, we are now up to item, uh, I'm totally lost. Uh, eight point two, the Sixth Street West Improvement Project authorized plans and specifications, Mr. Schmidt.
All right, good evening, Mayor Council, I'm gonna get the, I have the presentation that we'll run through tonight, I'll get that pulled up right now. Let's see, is she on the screen? And it looks like it's working. Okay, so, tonight we're at, we're kind of at the end of a road here, as far as the design.
See what you did there.
The design is, uh, finished up here on the Sixth Street plans, so what we're looking at doing tonight is, uh, the, the recommendation would be for council to approve the plans and specs and authorize us to advertise the project for bidding, so, that's kind of where we're at in time. Um, I have the, the presentation, this is, um, most of it's the same as what you saw in December, when we brought this to the council to authorize us to prepare the plans and specs. So, I will go through some of this, um, maybe a little quicker than the first time that was given. Please stop me if you wanna dig in on an issue, but, um, we'll just run through the presentation. The key updates I wanna give are a budget update of where the project sits right now, and then, um, an overall schedule update for the project delivery as it's laid out, so. So Sixth Street West, um, obviously everybody knows that this is a, is essentially a gateway to downtown Carver. Um, it links the, the greater Jonathan Carver Parkway two twelve area directly to downtown. Um, that was a specific part of the Jonathan Carver Parkway project that was recently done with the roundabout construction at Sixth Street, and this project seeks to resolve a number of issues um, between Jonathan Carver Parkway and downtown at Broadway. So, lots of goals for the project. Number one, pavement rehab, I don't think anybody else that it's in dire need of some help. With that, the drainage issues that are on that corridor, um, we're looking to resolve those issues as well with the project. Jumping into some of the other aspects of the project, um, multimodal transportation is a big one. So, um, the LRIP grant, um, award that we received from Mindot, that was a really big piece of that, with the addition of the bike lanes, um, widening the walkout to eight feet. So a lot of improvements there for both bicyclists and pedestrians alike. We are improving the corridor with lighting, um, both street lighting and trail bollards that go down the corridor, so that'll be a nice, um, safety improvement. And then also traffic calming, we're gonna take a look, look at a couple intersections, um, both at Lylewood and then downtown at Broadway, and see what we did there with, with, uh, those two intersections specifically. So here is the, the, uh, plan layout. This is how it, very similar to what you saw in December again, so it just kinda shows the extents from end to end, um, and then noting some of the key features, right? So from left to right, we got the lighting, we have the, the trail bollards. Um, I'll show you, I'll, we'll zoom in here on Lylewood Parkway. Um, the retaining walls are failing on the corridor, they're in really rough shape, so with the project, um, the retaining walls will be reconstructed. And then, um, jumping into the last two there, we'll look at a couple more renderings going down the corridor. So, uh, as far as the typical section is concerned, right now, um, it's a thirty-two foot street. Um, it's two, two wide lanes essentially, so two sixteen-foot lanes, very open, feels, um, very open to traffic. Um, what we're gonna be doing with the project is reducing the, uh, travel lane width to ten and a half feet, and then adding that five and a half foot, uh, bike lane on both sides of the road. So the typical section width itself from curb to curb is not changing. Um, it's just how are we taking up the space within the curb lines? So here's the intersection at Lylewood Parkway, how it looks today. Um, as you can see, it's wide open, um, there's a, there's a pedestrian crossing there on the east side of the intersection. So here is, uh, the rendering.
Aaron, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
So, Councilmember McKnight has a meeting that she's gonna need to leave for in about twenty minutes. Can I ask for a lightning round presentation?
Sure, I definitely can do that.
Especially, and I only ask for that because we have seen this before a few times.
Yeah, okay.
If anybody has any questions, raise your hand.
For sure.
Fine with me. Slow down.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's the, to propose, here's another picture, before, after, you know, walls replaced, dynamic speed sign in this area. Uh, Broadway, this'll be a big change, it's a, essentially a two-way stop control today, with the through going north is free. This'll be changed to more of a curved, so there'll only be one stop sign for the north, um, leg of Broadway that goes up to the handful of houses up there. So it'll act and, and behave more like the through route.
For the north? So if you're coming north?
No, the, so if you're going southbound on Broadway, from like, on Old Broadway?
Okay.
As you approach the intersection, you will have to stop. If that red car is there?
Thank you.
You'll have to stop. Okay, so this is where we wanna talk, uh, specifically, um, the cost estimate, where it sits today, all in. Um, we wanna reserve three million dollars for the project. So this is an increase from the last time you saw this in December. At that time, we were projecting about two point six. Um, and this is completely based on where the bidding environment is sitting in twenty twenty-two. So we've had a, a number of projects that have, have come in now, you know, that we've been monitoring, and we think that we should prepare ourselves for a three million dollar project here, all in. Um, I'm hopeful, I've run, um, parallel estimates for like a low bid situation, if somebody really wants to, to get the project, we could, we could be in the two-seven range, but, um, I don't wanna recommend to you something less than three, I want you to prepare for that, um, if you're willing to do that tonight, so. That's where we're sitting with the estimate. Um, the good news is, though, from a funding perspective, there's no new money that's entering into the equation here, so. It's still out of two buckets of money. Number one, it's the LRIP application, the one point two-five million, and then the rest of the money is coming from bonding that's already been done, it's in the system, and that was in twenty twenty-one when we did the street reconstruction bonds and the utility bonds, um, for the water treatment plant. So, that's the good news. We're not asking to do anything funky with new funding in the system, it's already there in place. It's just how much we're gonna have to pull from is, is really the thing, so. As far as schedule goes, um, tonight, like I said, I'm, um, recommending council produce plans and specs, um, orders advertising for bids. Um, if that, if that's goes through, what we'd be doing is bidding the project here in April, and then hoping to bring award recommendation back in May for a June construction start. So that's the last piece here, I wanted to break down the, um, construction. Um, I know it was a goal of everybody to have the project done by steamboat days as a substantial completion date. Uh, the way we have it laid out today is we would run substantial completion through October fifteenth, so the project would, would potentially not be done by steamboat days. And that's because of material supply issues that are happening across the whole market right now. Um, water main pipe is extremely hard to get right now. We're working with the suppliers, I'm calling them, you know, very frequently, and I don't feel right about setting a substantial completion date of September ninth, because I don't think that there, there's a very reasonable chance that could be achieved. So, our recommendation is you give them a substantial completion date, you know they're gonna be able to hit, and then they can plan it accordingly. If they can get the pipe and wanna do the project right away, more power to them, but if they can't, it gives them more time to be able to fulfill the obligations of the contract. So if they don't start until, you know, August, because of getting the pipe until then, that's just the way it would be, so. Final completion date would be in twenty twenty-three regardless, um, the final wear, wear course pavement would go down next spring, is how we have it laid out. So, one caveat, um, to the steamboat days piece is, um, we would provide a project milestone in the agreement that would state that they would have to have the surface restored to a gravel road for steamboat days, and that they would have to remove equipment off of that, the main drag on that parade route for that, for that weekend.
So that was my only question, when it says off the parade route or out of the parade route? So is it, are we gonna see construction equipment sitting alongside, up in the grass, along the parade route? Are they gonna, maybe realize they mobilize and bring it in, are they gonna be taking it out? Because I'm just, with a lot of people walking around on steamboat days, I think that it's probably not in anyone's best interest to have a lot of heavy equipment sitting alongside the road.
Yes, so we provide a couple areas where they can move equipment to, the intent would be to get them off of actual Sixth Street. So, the north part of Broadway, as you go north of that intersection, So the north part of Broadway, as you go north of that intersection, in within that right of way there, we would allow them to park equipment up that area.
How far up? Like, help me, I mean, because there's where the houses are, I mean, can you see it from down on Broadway, or are they going to be up higher?
Right, it's just shown as anywhere north of that intersection, so we can, there's notes in the plan about this has to be coordinated with the engineer, so we're, we'll work through that detail. And then the other piece is the north, the north parking stalls of Community Park parking lot would be allowed to stage in there as well.
That entire parking lot gets filled up with parade floats, so I would prefer not to have equipment in there if possible. So I don't know what we can do about that, but that is a busy space up there. So when you say on the north side, like, how many are we?
The north, just the north stall line of that parking lot is how it's laid out. So like, right again, up against Sixth Street, you know, like the, where the last bay of stalls is.
Yeah, I think you should find somewhere else.
Yeah, I, it's not, okay.
Maybe even Lions Park.
Well, this is going in here. I know that we are, we're in a hurry for, to get out of here, but I prefer it not to be at Community Park. I'd love it if it went up the other Broadway. There's just a lot going on down here that weekend, and then again.
Yeah. So I think what we could, the alternative is to stretch along probably the west side of Broadway, you know, north from Sixth Street, so where Mr. Schultz, Ken Schultz, his property, so or Greg Witt's garage, it'd be lined up all along that stretch.
Just up Broadway, out of Community Park.
Yep, we can do that.
Sold.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then for, yeah, normal staging, like, June and July, the the north bay of stalls isn't going to be an issue for Community Park, so that would be, that's a really good option for them when they're working on that end of the job, they need to be able to park a few things, you know, over there. So I would recommend leaving that in just for normal
Right.
Construction, but just that weekend, we'll work through that, so.
Let's see, is that it? Okay. Joy, will you go first?
Uh, I don't have any questions. You've answered everything.
Lori? No questions? No? Glenn?
I'll make a motion. Unless you have questions.
Well, I can do it now or later. So Erin, I, is this going to cost us more because of our our deadline that is maybe a bit more non-traditional, and because of the caveats that we're putting in here because of steamboat days?
So the way I have it laid out, it's a traditional schedule, so it's not, if we would have done the steamboat day completion date, I would say yes, that would, there was a very good chance that would cost you more money, but as it's laid out right now, there's nothing untraditional about this.
Okay. I know that I may be in the minority on this, and I really enjoy the steamboat days parade, but, you know, if we can work around it, great, but I think this construction project is latier than a parade, and one day and one snapshot in time, so I don't want to see it get in the way or be a barrier or make us end up having to pay more. I'm a little, I guess, not, not surprised, but a little shocked that we've gone up $400,000 in less than four months, although I understand that that's the way of the world. I just want to make sure that this gets done and is done within these budget parameters.
Yeah, I mean, diesel's $5 a gallon right now.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Yes.
Nobody can predict it, and it's, it's, my recommendation is put it out to bid, you don't know until you get the bid what it's going to cost on that day, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Now, if you're ready, or anyone.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution 112-22 to approve plans and specs and ordering advertisement bids for the Sixth Street West Improvement Project.
All right, we've got a motion by councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Merrick, communications?
None, thank you.
Okay. Joy?
I have nothing.
Lori?
I don't have any comments or things.
Christie?
Nothing.
Glenn, no.
Well, once upon a time, I, Chad, you want to reiterate what you told me about the flood stage?
Flooding, I believe it was only a 30% chance of hitting flood stage levels right now, it's set at like 11 feet, depending on what we give for rain.
Minimal.
Which should be good.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, that's, thank you, that is a really good segue into my updates, which, don't be mad, I've got a few. Let's see, we learned a week ago today that the City of Carver is going to be receiving $2.5 million from the federal omnibus bill for our levy project, which is great and exciting. That's what we know now. The details as far as timing and requirements and kind of strings that are attached to that money are all TBD. We're trying to, so $2.5 million on a $12 million in January budget still leaves us quite a funding gap that we need to work towards. So I met with both Representative Nash and Senator Coleman to kind of put together a game plan as to who I need to be reaching out and talking to to try to get money from the bonding bill. Couple weeks ago, I did a meet the mayor event at Carver Crossing, where I got to meet a really good, engaged group of folks who had a lot, a lot of questions. There are so many things that I promised that I'd follow up with them, like sharing the land use map, you know, that I had, like, the email that I responded back to them with. Had coffee with Superintendent Sales Belton, oh, I always do that in my mind, Sales Adams, that Sharon Sales Belton is her auntie. So we talked about a bunch of things, most importantly, if you thought that what was outside of the construction trailer is a solar panel, it is not. It is the awning.
I saw your post, that was fantastic.
So did I, so did I, and so did the folks at Carver Crossing, so she, that was a little tumbling.
What is it?
It's the awning.
It was over the front door, they took it down the front door.
Totally thought it was solar panels.
So as did I. Speaking of Carver Elementary, last Wednesday, I was part of Biz Town, which was a super fun exercise with the fifth graders, where they get to develop real-world skills of interviewing, and they can apply to be whatever kind of role they want to be in their little town. So I got to interview the candidates who wanted to be mayor, and one of those folks was Emerson Oy, Leah Oy's daughter, who was just amazing and knocked my socks off, and was super funny, because she was trying to, some of the questions were like, what experiences do you have that would make you a good mayor? And she's like, well, I'm the oldest, and I keep my brother in line a lot, so it was just, every time I go to that school, I wish I'd take better notes, because every 10 minutes somebody says something that has me rolling. Planning Commission, last week, I sat in for Glenn, and we went through the preliminary and final plat for Next Steps Learning Center.
Aye.
That was pretty straightforward. We did have our very first meeting where the Zoom worked, and folks were able to participate from the Zoom, like, much like they were tonight from their homes. And we had two residents from, that's Meridian Fields, who had some concerns about buffering and distance, but I think all questions that we were able to give them satisfactory answers for and help, you know, kind of assuage their concerns. Last Friday, we had the Business Alliance, where we're continuing to have pretty decent participation for that, that's now on Fridays at 11, once a month. Today, I was on K-Check Radio down in New Prey for Mayor Monday, so that was fun and got to give them an update about the City of Carver. And then wrapping it up, welcome again, Lynn, the longest first day ever, I'm so sorry. I promise you, I think our last meeting was 20 minutes, so this is an anomaly.
Yes.
And then last but not least, I want to commend staff for all their work on Brookview.
Yes.
I think everyone's been, has put in super, super long hours and has gone above and beyond, and again, you talked about how it's hard to tell somebody that they can't have a deck. I think a lot of the answers that you guys are giving these folks are those hard answers, so it's not what they want to hear, but everybody's done a tremendous job, so thank you all. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We've got a motion by Mayor Johnson, and a second by councilmember Henry. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Good evening.